All set?
You're on.
All right, we're gonna open the meeting for May 30th at 6:30. We stand for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions, see the flag in the United States of America. Into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we don't have any public comments that's been submitted, so we'll go on to the warrants. Lisa, can you read the warrants?
Sure. I make a motion to approve payroll warrant number seventeen dash forty-seven in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand, six eighty-one and eighty-four cents.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous?
I make a motion to approve deduction warrant number seventeen dash forty-five A in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-one cents.
Second that.
Well, I'll second that.
Seconded by two. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I make a motion to approve deduction warrant number seventeen dash forty-six in the amount of six hundred dollars.
You second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve bill warrant number seventeen dash forty-seven in the amount of one million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and four cents.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Can I get a short breakdown on what that is inclusive of?
Yeah, so seven hundred and fifty thousand approximately is Pennsyl, three hundred and sixty thousand is the light department. And the remainder is the town and water and sewer bills.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous? Thank you. Next, we have appointments. Appointment of Joseph Demore, nine Cherry Tree Lane, Groveland, to fill the vacancy on the finance board through June 30th, 2017. Joe is not here.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
So if you'll recall, Joe was filling in to cover a vacancy, so they had a quorum. He had requested only to stay on through town meeting. However, we've had one board member is moving out of town and is not available to finish the year-end business. So Kathy has asked and Joe has agreed to stay on through June 30th. At which point then he'd like to be an alternate member as of July 1st. But this is just so we can close out the year and get our votes for the finance board.
There would still need to be other people appointed to that though, right?
July 1st, they all have to be reappointed because we're reorganizing, but this is just so we have enough specifically.
Enough to get us through to July 1st, okay.
Correct.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Joe Demore to fill the vacancy on the finance board through June 30th, 2017.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous? Appointment of Kelsey Fitzgerald, one eighty School Street, Groveland, to the position of library page effective May 31st, 2017. This is a part-time position, up to eleven hours a week, at a starting rate of nine dollars and thirty-two cents an hour, increasing to eleven dollars an hour as of July 1st, 2017, and subject to a successful Cory check.
So Janice here from the library, if you have questions on that.
Kelsey's not? Kelsey's not here?
No, she's not.
Okay. You're comfortable recommending her? I mean, she has experience and...
Yeah, she's actually worked there before, so...
Anybody wanna make a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Kelsey Fitzgerald to the position of library page effective May 31st, 2017.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Yes.
Yep.
Is this through June 30th or come up for reappointment?
Library page is a not annual appointment positions.
Anything else? Bill, you good? All right, all those in favor?
Yes.
Appointment of James Greenberg-Harrell to the position of custodian facilities coordinator effective June 2nd, 2017. This is a part-time position, eighteen hours a week at a rate of eighteen dollars an hour, and subject to a successful Cory check. There you are. I understand that you have extensive background in facilities.
Office building, schools, I had my own business, a lot of employees, I've contributed office buildings and schools. I have a business on, I'm based on carpet floors, we work painting, we work...
A little bit of everything? Good. Was that, was eighteen hours what he was doing before?
That's what the position's been since we established it, yep.
Okay.
So that's replacing the position that was to Carla?
Yeah, 'cause he resigned.
Correct.
Anybody have any questions? Bill?
No, not really. I mean, it seems they could have more than enough, you know, education to do the job and what have you. Have you been through the building and can you see anything that you might wanna change?
Give me a tour, Friday.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I think the last guy did a good job, so I think you'll be, you know, you'll like to see what he's done, and the place really looks clean and what have you.
Jim likes to buff floors, so we're good. We'll keep that up.
No, I was saying...
Blue ribbon floor.
Yeah, I was saying it used to come in the building, and what a difference it is having it smell and clean and look good. So, yeah.
Lisa, any questions? Ed, any questions? Someone make a motion?
I make a motion to appoint James Greenberg to the position of custodian facilities coordinator effective June 2nd.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous? Congratulations.
Thank you for coming.
Appointment of Ryan Cotton to the position of temporary seasonal cemetery groundskeeper. The appointment is effective May 16th, 2017, at an hourly rate of eleven dollars an hour, at a maximum of twenty-five hours per week, for a maximum of twenty-five weeks. Ryan is not here.
Ryan is not here. Debbie Stewart was planning to be here. She was under the weather this evening.
Okay. A little bit of background on Ryan, I guess, you know, Debbie's okay with appointing him since she recommended him.
They are okay. So Ryan did work for us previously. The cemetery commissioners have met with him. He understands the requirements of the job. He is comfortable with those requirements, so they feel at this time they wanna put his name forward.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we appoint Ryan Cotton.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, after he goes.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Ed. Ed, go ahead.
No, I'll make a motion, we appoint Ryan Cotton, position temporary seasonal groundskeeper effective May 16th. Hourly rate of eleven dollars an hour, maximum twenty-five hours a week, for a maximum of twenty-five weeks.
And that's actually the wrong date, I apologize. It's gonna be June 6th will be his...
June 6th?
June 6th would be his effective date.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Lisa, question?
So the question is, there seemed to be some reference that he was employed by the town previously?
Yes.
And was, did he leave on good terms?
He was a seasonal employee that year as well, so he last worked for us a few years ago. So he left on his own when the season ended.
And there were no concerns about job performance or anything?
There were concerns, which is why they've sat down with him and sort of laid out the groundwork this time around.
Okay. So is there anything in place in the event that performance is not met?
Apparently, they have discussed that with him, and they have gone through what will happen if those standards are not met.
Okay.
They are comfortable. The commissioners are comfortable after having that conversation to still submit his name.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ed, you good?
Yep.
Bill?
Yep.
All in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous? All right. Next, we have Ms. Brody, Town Clerk, to discuss contingency plan for the clerk's office in your absence.
I have been working with someone for the last two and a half weeks. That will be able to go into my office and do daily, or what I would do daily. Be able to use the town computer, go into birth, death, and marriage files, and answer the telephone. And that's what she will do in the case of my absence.
Okay.
So can, can I ask how you came to find this person?
She, um, she's... I don't know. She has come into town hall to pay utility bills. She was very friendly, very outgoing. I chatted with her a few times and asked her if she wanted to come in. And she knows that it's a volunteer, that, you know, she comes in during the day her kids are in school. She works nights.
Okay.
So this works for her, and it also works for me.
Okay.
Anne, what kind of knowledge does she have, any background in doing what your office at all or anything? Like, what did she do? What's her background?
She's a hairdresser.
Okay.
Which gives her the customer service, being in that job.
Yeah.
And her having any background knowledge of working in a clerk's office? No. She doesn't have any. But there isn't anything in that office that I can't show her.
Okay. So you'll be training her for the, what she's gonna do?
Absolutely.
Okay. And the other thing is, is I know before we had talked about was going into town computers and all that, not a problem? She won't have a problem being Cory checked and all that stuff that we've asked previously?
If you look into what people need to be Cory checked, it's people that work with seniors and people that work with children. And that's not going to be the case. She has no, she is Cory by the school. So, I mean, she's already been Coryed.
Yeah.
So that, that won't be an issue.
Right.
And I would hesitate to have any kind of policy that isn't consistent. So if we weren't applying that to other people, I would be hesitant to ask somebody in this position, unless we were doing that across the board.
We do, actually. We require all volunteers to be Cory checked. The library is all Cory checked. Council on Aging volunteers are Cory checked.
Because they work with seniors and children.
But that's not the...
Those positions.
No, that's not the only requirement. We can Cory check all volunteers, period.
But is there a written policy on that?
It's just, I don't think we have a written policy. It's just how we've always handled it with volunteers in this town, because there is sensitive data.
Do we have, well, can you share her name or...
Sure. Rhonda Carducci. And that's R-O-N-D-A. C-A-R-D-U-C-C-I.
Do I know her?
I don't.
That makes sense familiar.
She has kids at the back now.
When can she get started?
She's already started.
Oh, she has, okay.
Yeah.
Now, does that have to be appointed by the board, or is that just...
No, that's appointed by me.
And Anne, it's a non-paid position, strictly volunteer.
Yep.
Okay. And the, and I'm gonna go back to the point like I had said before, is if someone's in the town computer and what have you, you trust that she'll be in, no problems, I mean, as far as going into the... I don't know, I don't even know where they go. I don't even know how deep you can get, but...
The only thing she would need to go into the town computer for would be to do a dog license.
Okay.
Or, which I eventually will show her, how to do a burial permit.
Yeah.
And to get a death certificate. That would involve the town computer. Somebody had mentioned that there were finances in the town computer, not in mine. Denise's.
Well, they are. I mean, all, all the computers in the town are networked to the server with the financial software. So someone who's savvy enough can sit there and get into any of our financial data. They're all linked together through the network.
But my other question is, and maybe you can answer this, Denise, so Anne is an elected position. As an elected person, was she required to go through any of those procedures?
I don't know. I wasn't hearing Anne was elected.
I don't think that if she's elected and has the appointing authority for that position, I would say that it's under the embrace of that elected position. So I would question whether it has the same kind of purview as other volunteer positions, because it's not an appointment by the town.
Right, but that actually confuses me, because this board appoints everyone else that falls under the town clerk's office, the registrars, the constables, so I'm not sure why...
They, no, I, all right, maybe I hire them, so to speak, but only I don't pay them. Board of Selectmen give a blessing to the person that I have chosen.
Okay.
My constables, my registrars.
Right, but they're on the annual appointment list, those positions.
Yes. I don't know why, but...
I don't know why either, but I just know they're on the annual appointment list.
So is your, is your plan for this, if you're gonna be out Monday and Tuesday, say, next week, you'll call her and say, you know, I'm gonna be out, like, can you take over for those days?
Correct. If I know ahead of time.
Right, if you know ahead of time.
I did not know this time.
Um, is she okay with short notice? Like, if, for instance, you say, "Look, I'm not feeling good Friday morning," or whatever the day is, would she be able to, to come in? Or would that be something that we still kinda have to scramble for to find a way to do the services of the town?
If we're talking just one day?
Not a big deal.
Do we have to scramble for somebody if it's just one, I mean, if I'm in?
Depends on the time of year. I mean, if it's election year, yes. If it's a random day during the summer, no.
I will have to ask her that, that, that's...
I'm just wondering what her availability is, that's all.
I know she works nights, and she should be available during the day.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Ed?
No, I'm off, sir.
So, right now, you're the keeper of the records for the town.
Correct.
And are you the only person that has a key to your office? Because you should be the only person that has a key to your office.
I understand I should be the only...
In the role of keeper of the records, because there's a, there's a piece of that that is considered an integrity piece?
There is a key, to the best of my knowledge, over at the police station. If there are any others, I don't know.
And is the, the key at the police station, is that a practice that has been in place for some time?
I believe so.
No, I can answer that. So I have a key to every office. Anne did not want me to have a key to her office. This board decided that a key needs to be in place somewhere, so it's at the police station.
My office has been breached. Things have been touched that had, people had no business touching. And I didn't feel that anyone should have a key to the office.
So my question is, the board, the board took a vote, that that's the procedure that should be put in place?
You could speak to the board members.
Was a vote taken that, and it's on the record that you guys voted, that a key should be placed at the police department, and that's the policy and procedure that should be...
No, it wasn't, that I know of. But I will say that Mrs. Brody was out with a sickness or what have you. We're trying to get into the office to do the town business, dog licenses, marriages, et cetera, et cetera. And when I was the chairman, what happened was they needed to get in. And I didn't wanna have any problems with people saying that things got breached and what have you. So I said, "We will open it, we'll get the key to open it, and the key is going to remain at the police station until this is resolved." I didn't say it was gonna stay there forever. I said it's gonna stay there, so that we cannot have people name-calling and what have you, and that's all I did.
And nobody got a key.
What's that?
Nobody got the key.
Nobody got the key?
Correct. The office was broken into. It wasn't opened with a key.
Yes, that's correct.
The key wasn't at the police station at all?
The key was not at the police station. We were told to break down the door, or we were gonna have the locks changed. That's what I was told.
The key wasn't...
How was the door opened, though?
Somebody was, who, who...
The door was opened...
Somebody, you were directed to break down the door?
Yes. Or have a locksmith here that had to change the locks.
How did that come about?
I was directed by the chairman.
Because there was no key. You were directed by the chairman not to break the door down, you were directed by him to open the door. I said, "Open that door, if you need to get in there, because we're getting complaints by four or five different individuals. We have to get in there to do business, we gotta get in and do business." And I clearly said, "If the police need to be there when the door gets open, the police need to be there when the door gets open."
Did you know where I was?
In the hospital.
Why didn't you send somebody to me to get the key?
Because I don't think that was appropriate to send someone to you to the hospital when you're in the hospital, but I did do...
Okay. Then you sent the police to my house.
To see if you were, if your husband was there to get the message.
Nobody was home. So why didn't you wait a little bit longer? He would've given you the key.
Well, I got a phone call from some resident in Groveland that told me the key was supposed to be given to the vice chairman of the board, and the vice chairman was supposed to get us the key, and that never made it to us. So if we're gonna sit here all night name-call, there was a duty, there was people that needed marriage certificates, death certificates during that time, that needed to do business, and that's what we needed to do.
On that one day.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
If you wanna... When you went in the hospital, did you give the key to anyone so we could, we can control and run business out of that office?
I didn't know that anyone needed to get in. Nobody approached me.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't come to the hospital and bother you if you're sick in the hospital. I wasn't gonna do that. I wasn't.
Could somebody have called?
Okay, so just, let's back up for a second here. So I guess my only concern is, let's just talk about protocol for the future. Let's not talk about kind of what happened. I think the issue is, that's why you were asked to come and propose a contingency plan, so that in the future, if something like this were to happen, there would be a plan. But I, I still believe that there's a role in the, yours is a position that is elected, and there's a reason for that. And again, it's the keeper of the record, if you look by statute. So I would propose that you designate who has that second key, and that it not be a key that anyone can have, that you make a decision. And if the board feels that that volunteer needs to be Coryed in terms of, I don't think it's totally unreasonable, but if that person's volunteering at a school, they've had a Cory. But I...
What's my guarantee that there isn't another key?
You can get the locks changed. I mean, I think the board would have to take a, the board would have to...
I think that would be important to do so. But as the, the town clerk is the keeper of the records, should know who's in and out of that office. If there's a possibility that there's another key out there, the lock should be changed. Town clerk should have the key. And if, if she needs to give it to somebody else, she should. There shouldn't be another key to that office floating around so somebody could breach the information. And it's possible. And we just heard that somebody that's computer savvy could, could access the town finance records, et cetera. So I, I think if they can do that, they could probably access other things. I, I think it's, the lock should be changed. Town clerk should have the key. And only, the only key, unless she needs to give it to somebody else.
And I think it's fair, moving forward, to respectfully request that a second key be given to whoever you designate as a backup in the event of your illness, like this previous time? So that if there is an emergency, the board knows who they can contact. If there has to be access.
Not a problem.
So do you think that there's more than two keys?
Do I?
Yeah.
I really don't have any idea, Mike.
Well, as far as I know, there's only two keys. You have one, and the police station has one. Whether or not someone made copies of those is possible. I think it's probably a good idea that we change the locks and we make sure we know we only have, at least immediately have two keys.
Can you also provide the board with Ms. Carducci's, like, telephone number and contact information? So that moving forward? And then the next request would be that if for some reason you're incapacitated, that you would, you know, to the best of your ability, contact the board and let the board know that Ms. Carducci will take over any duties in your absence. I know that that's probably difficult if you're in a kind of situation where you're not able to. But again, to the best of your ability.
If I'm able to get in touch with her or with anyone on the board, I will certainly do that.
I would request that you follow that plan.
Do what?
You follow the plan that Lisa kinda laid out. You know, you notify Rhonda that you're gonna be out. She'll have the key, but that you'll also notify me, as a chairman, that you're gonna be out, and Rhonda's gonna be in there, or whatever's gonna happen. So that way, we have a paper trail on, you know, what to expect, and people know that things are gonna continue to move forward.
Right.
So you wanna be notified directly or through Denise?
Directly. You can do directly. You have my information.
I have your email, that's it.
So before you can get her, you find her at some point.
And that's in the town computer, I don't have that anywhere else, so that she has it for future use.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'll give you my information, that's fine. But I would prefer to be kept in the loop on what's going on, as much as possible. Obviously, things could come up where you can't necessarily do that. And I would like to be able to get in contact with Rhonda if that does happen, where I know something's happened, you're not, you can't actually go through this process, and I can take over the process and make sure that she takes care of what needs to happen. Anything else?
Yeah, if you are saying that you're an elected official for the town and what have you, would you even wanna go through all this whole process? If it's, if you, if you feel that that's your, your office and your dual, your duty is that office, then why would you even want us being involved in it? And, and you know, and I...
I wanna work with the board of selectmen.
Right.
I don't wanna work for you. I wanna work with you.
Right.
And if someone needs to go into my office, it would've been easy to ask for the key. But to go in there, break in, change all the passwords, I feel violated. I don't think that's right.
Well...
And I think the answer to your question, Bill, is, is exactly that, so that if Anne can't guarantee, so this is a plan to avoid that type of situation again.
I agree, I agree. And I will ask...
And to back up, Bill, we had no plan when this came up. So this is kinda ad hoc, as we're going, to try and get stuff done, so.
And the only thing I'm gonna say, and I'm not gonna sit here and defend what, what took place. It was an election, there were certain things that needed to be done, we hadn't, we, we didn't hear, we did not hear, you know...
Okay. What, you needed to break in for what? Something to do with the election? I was back here on time for that.
There was death records, as I just stated. Listen, like, they just said a minute ago, "We gonna go back and hash this?" My, all I'm trying to do is I...
All I'm asking is, why?
Why? Because people needed to get marriage certificates and death certificates on a certain timely manner they couldn't get. That was the main reason. Okay?
I think a funeral was postponed several days because they weren't able to get...
The point I'm trying to make is, I'm not gonna sit here and feel bad for what I did, because I think I did what I was elected by the town of Groveland people to do. And furthermore, if I was to go in the hospital for a long period of time, I would've probably told my employer employee that I'm gonna be there and make some arrangements for, you know, to get into my office or whatever, so...
I didn't have any way to get in touch with you guys. I didn't have telephone numbers.
So...
You are my employer.
I think right now, we're setting, we're setting in place kind of a protocol. Let's ensure that Anne has the contact numbers that she needs, and that we have the contact numbers that we need in the event of a situation like this in the future. And then, if people are satisfied that that kind of meets the standard of both sides being able to communicate and have a plan, I think that's what we should do moving forward. And I can make a motion to that effect. So I would make a motion that Mike provide his contact information and a backup contact in the event that you're not available. I would make, also as part of that motion, that Anne provide Rhonda Carducci's contact information for the board in the event that Anne is unable to respond to any requests. And then, I would also make as part of that motion, which I can do separately, that the locks be changed, and that Anne and her designate, which I believe she...
Yeah, why don't you make two separate motions for that?
Okay, sorry. So the first motion is the identification of contact people, which is Bill providing you his contact information and a backup, excuse me, Mike, I'm sorry, Mike.
Mike.
That's right, you can call me Bill.
And you providing Rhonda Carducci's information to the board. So that's the first motion.
I have a question on that.
Uh, well, can we get a second and then have a discussion? Bill? Ed, do you want a second then?
No.
No, no.
Okay.
All right, so that doesn't pass. Go ahead, Ed.
I just have a question of, based upon that, that I, I think we're, I think we're interfering with an elected position that I don't think that legally that we have, we have a right to. Individuals elected by the people, and I don't, I don't think that the board of selectmen should be interfering with somebody that's in an elected position. And I, I think we're overstepping our bounds, and that's, that's the reason that I didn't second it. I, I think we're overstepping our legal authority if, if we, if we follow through with that. I don't think we have any, again, not to repeat, but I don't think we have any, anything statutorily to instruct a elected proposition, whoever it may be, on, on how to perform their job.
Well, I don't think we're overstepping or telling her what to do. We're setting up backup plans in case she is not able to perform her duties. Like that happened before. So this is responsibility of this board to make sure that the town still operates, no matter who is out. As Bill had mentioned, if someone is out of the office in a different department, they usually have a backup or a point of contact to keep information flowing and keep the town's business running. So I don't think we're overstepping and telling her what to do. We're just asking, in the event that she's out, what should we be doing, or who should we be going at, that you are recommending Rhonda that she will be taking over? So I disagree.
And I, I think that's her duties and responsibilities to, to follow through with that, to, for her to make the suggestion on, on who should follow through if she's not here, and I think she's provided us with that. And I don't think that we need to go any further. She's, she's answered the question.
Are you, so let me ask you this, are you uncomfortable with the proposal that we've made? That... Because it's important. It is, you are, you are, you are an elected person who has the autonomy. I think the goal of this is to avoid having a situation where your office gets breached. I think this is to ensure, because I've read the statute too, and what the statute says is that if you're incapacitated for a period of time, it's within the board's right to elect, to, excuse me, appoint an emergency person. I think this plan avoids that route. It gives you the control over who the person is going to be... I think this plan avoids that route. It gives you the control over who the person is going to be, taking care of your duties.
You're not just appointing somebody.
Correct. And she will know what will be needed.
Right, because if we appoint someone, who knows if, I mean, they could be an employee of the town, but they don't know what to do in your office. This should mitigate some of that. Denise, you got a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I had forwarded to Bill when he was chair and you, Mike, when you became chair. Because town council actually got involved in this matter. And they provided a, a write-up of how, even though Ann is elected, everything in her office falls under the care, custody, and control of the board of selectmen. In any office, actually. All property, all documents that falls under the board of selectmen.
I would want to see that ruling.
Yeah, Mike-
Because as the keeper of the records, I respectfully don't agree that that's, I, I think there's a specific reason for that and it's for the integrity of the town. So I would like to see that.
Yep. They, they provided the correct statute that identifies that. So just keep that in mind that that falls under.
Just to follow up, I'd like to see the, the, the response in writing. I'd also, I'd also like to see the, the question in writing. But sometimes, as everybody knows, depending on how the question is asked, what you get for an answer. So I'd like to see the question that was proposed as well as the answer.
And that's fine for documents. But what about things that are in that office that are not documents? That nobody has the right to touch?
Such as?
Such as the time clock? That has been touched?
Can I just clarify the allegations that continue to come against me and the time clock? I've never touched the time clock. I've never gone in there and used the time clock. I didn't backdate a cemetery posting, which is what I was accused of. The time clock change, the time clock time changed on a weekend that I sent a memo out that the power in this building was going to be cut for several hours to have the transformer changed. It was shortly after that that the time was noticed to be off. I was accused of changing the time clock because I'm the only one that had a key. The only time I went in that office on that Friday was when the state elections office showed up and was upset because Ann was supposed to be here until they dropped off stuff for the early voting. He said he had called her. She was going to be here. He came here with documentation. It was myself, Tom Cusick from the water department, and Patty Rogers from the water department. We opened the door. We unloaded the documents. We closed the door. And I actually left for the day.
So here's my thought. If, if, if there needs to be a further discussion about this, I'm happy to have that be another time. But I don't really feel that that was kind of the goal of this meeting. It was really just to develop a contingency plan. And if Ann feels that, you know, her concerns haven't been addressed, I think we can schedule a further meeting to discuss that.
Sure.
But for tonight, I'd like to just, and I understand that Ed is not comfortable with seconding that motion. But it sounds to me like you're comfortable with that arrangement.
I do not have a problem with notifying Mike, Bill, Ed, you.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be all of us. I think it's one person with a backup. Because I don't think it's fair in an emergency to have to contact four, five people. And then your plan for coverage in the event that you weren't, that's a plan that you came up with and that you're comfortable with.
Correct.
So, I, I'm hoping that that might alleviate some of your concerns, Ed, because it's coming from Ann. As opposed to if there's an emergency that we have that, I think it's much better for the plan to come from Ann than there to be an emergency in which we have to intervene and appoint somebody that's not of Ann's choice.
Okay, just repeat the motion, please.
So I make a motion that we develop basically a protocol that if, if Ann becomes unable to do her position for any reason, she'll notify the chair, Mike Wood. And that Ann will provide the name and contact information of Rhonda Carducci as her backup for that potentiality.
Do you have a second?
You don't have a problem with that?
No.
Okay. Well, I'll second that. Based on, based on the town clerk's recommendation.
Any discussion, Bill?
No, I just, I will go back to what I said. I just want you to feel comfortable because you were saying that it's an office that's solely elected office and what have you. Now, I feel that we're going back to what I did and we're, and we're going to be overstepping our bounds again. I understand that we're going to put protocol in place to have you make, call the chair and call the other person. That protocol wasn't in place originally. I got that. But I just want to make sure that we're not going to have situations roll over again. I mean, I was the chairman. I didn't get a call.
Again, we didn't have anything in place, so we were trying to ad hoc this.
Agreed.
Yeah. Can we, can we move the vote? Please, respectfully? Because I, I hear what you're saying, but I don't think you're going to-
Well, you're still making a point. That's what discussion is.
But we had that piece of back and forth. And I think it's not a blaming thing here. We're trying to just move forward.
I'm trying to get my point, though. That's what I'm trying to do.
Go ahead.
My point is I want you to be very comfortable in what takes place. That's all I want you to make sure. Before I raise my hand, I want you to make sure that you are going to be comfortable and no one's going to go in and breach anything of yours or what have you. Not trying to put a blame game here. If you can assure me that you are very happy with what's going to take place, I have no problem with it.
Are you okay with the process so far?
I will be very happy after the locks are changed.
Well, that'll be next, but-
It's a different motion.
Different motion. So as far as this process that Lisa has laid out, got seconded.
Yep.
Bill kind of threw in his two cents. I'm just asking you, you're okay with this?
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor?
Yes.
So the second motion that I would like to make is that the locks be changed and that you be provided the key. And if you choose to have someone else with the key, that is under your purview. Nobody else would have a key because you're the elected position who's the keeper of the records.
And ninety-nine percent of the time, I am the one that's in that office.
Didn't we say that we wanted Rhonda to have a spare key?
Right.
That there was a spare key around. So not only, you wouldn't just have the only key. Your, your appointee would have the key.
Correct.
So you want to revise that?
Well, I think this part, though, is just to change the locks, right?
Well, you threw in the key.
Yeah. So I make a motion that the locks be changed and that you be provided with a key or two keys. And that you provide Rhonda with the backup key in the event that you're unable to meet your elected duties.
Do you have a second?
I think that, I'll second that motion. I think it's important that the town clerk have, have the peace of mind that feels confident that nobody else can get into that office and, and access any of the records. And her as the keeper of the records has a responsibility to keep those safe. And I, I think that, I think that's, I, I think that's a great idea.
Further discussion, Bill?
No, the only thing I will say is you comfortably have no problem with her having the key.
No, I do not.
Okay.
I do not have a problem.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Yes.
That's it? And I did send you an email that has my cell phone number on it too. All right. I'm on this a bit.
Okay.
Unless I'm on the plane.
Okay.
Uh, next up, Mr. Dempsey. Update on the work for Johnson's Pond.
Mike Dempsey for the conservation commission. So, as you know, at a town meeting in April, two CPA projects were approved. One was for specifically on Johnson's Pond, called the Johnson's Pond Initiative. Part of that project was to do some planning about the future of the pond, some water quality measurements, and also some weed removal. The second project was the Johnson's Creek Management Planning Proposal. And that project involves add-on planning to the Johnson's Pond planning so that there'll be a plan in place for the entire creek from the start of the pond, the Haverline, all the way down to the Meramec River. So those two passed. Right now, we are awaiting to hear about two other funding possibilities. And they come from Senator Tar and Representative Mira's office. And those two projects involve some more money that would go towards the weed removal. And a second earmark that would go towards the Beezy Shore and making it easier to get into the pond over there at the bottom of Beezy Park. And older placement on the other side of the pond at Lower Center Street to prevent illegal parking. So, as far as the timeline for these projects are concerned, if the, right now, I've been working with Denise to prepare for the management planning project that will involve the pond and the creek. That obviously won't start until after July 1st. The commission has filed with DEP wetland and local permits for the process for weed removal in both Groveland and Boxford. And I have worked with Denise, working on a request for quotes on boulders. And also Bob Arkelens helped out with that. So that's kind of where we're at. As far as the timeline is concerned, it somewhat depends upon what happens with the state funds. So if the state funds come through, then we will try to complete the weed removal project this year. But regardless of that, we'll be hopefully getting the, the management plan in place for the pond and the creek. And then do the Beezy Shore and Boulder Placement work this fall, again, if the state funds come through. So that's kind of where we're at.
Are you waiting for the state budget to pass?
Yes.
So I think when I talked to Senator Tar the other day, that I believe the Senate passed it and it's going over to the House.
Yep.
So that may happen in the next couple of weeks, depending on how many revisions they have.
Right.
So you may have access to those grants or whatever you're waiting for by June, July timeframe anyways. Any questions?
Mike, I had a concern, a citizen in that area. I don't know if you can answer this question. The Great Ponds of Massachusetts has a hundred-year lease on that. The city of Haverhill has ownership and a lease, and the town of Boxford has ownership and a lease. Is that true on that Johnson's Pond? They wanted me to ask you to clarify.
Yeah, and I did ask Mike that a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
So I did bring that up and-
Yes.
That was an email, I think you, we went back and forth on.
I do have a little more information on it than what I had mentioned to you, Mike. So, I've been in touch with the Haverhill Water Department regarding a lease. And we've never seen a lease. I, I don't know if it's expired or what. But I did get some more information from the city of Haverhill. And they say that as a result of the city's 2003 Water Management Act permit, Johnson's Pond was removed as an active source by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Any future use of this emergency system would require authorization from Mass DEP as well as use of portable rental water treatment units. Also noted that Haverhill has committed to use wells under the Meramec River for all their future water sources. So it, it kind of backs up what I was told by the manager of the water department that they have no plans to use Johnson's Pond. And that it's kind of Groveland's responsibility.
So there's no hundred-year lease? I haven't been able to research it. I was, when I asked you about it, it's because someone had brought it to my attention. I would have thought that that would have come up somewhere down the line over the last thirty years.
Right.
But-
So, we are working with Haverhill. Dr. Mangiello has been in touch with Bob Ward over there. And we've talked to him several times. We've asked him about the lease. We haven't seen it or heard that they, you know, are concerned about it. And we're also filing this notice of intent with the town of Boxford, so they know everything that we're doing.
Okay. Lisa, any questions?
Yeah.
Ed?
Yes. Mike, I've done a little research on the, on, on the Great Ponds legislation, on the Great Ponds Act. And Johnson's Pond is, it is listed as a great pond by the Massachusetts Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And a great, a great pond is defined as, as any pond or, or lake that contain more than ten acres, acres in its natural state. Boxford owns about seven point eight acres and Groveland one hundred and forty-seven. Says here, any project located in, on, over, or underwater of a great pond is within the jurisdiction, jurisdiction of Mass General laws, chapter ninety-one. Chapter ninety-one regulates activities including construction, dredging, and filling in of great ponds. Chapter ninety-one seeks to preserve and protect the private uses, protect the rights of the public and guarantee private uses in waterways to serve a public purpose. Preserves pedestrian access along the shores for fishing, following, and navigation. Activities that require authorization through Energy and Environmental Affairs would be removal of materials, which would include rocks, bottom sediments, debris, sand, refuse, plant, or animal matter. And also that the department must also know the location where the materials are going to be disposed of. And that is, that, that's under, under the Great Pond legislation. That was back, actually back eighteen hundreds. Actually, I think it goes back further than that. But, and, and the information that I, I've been able to, talking to several people, is that Haverhill still has the water rights to Johnson's Pond. And I, I know everything has been taken out of the, the old pump station that, that Haverhill has. And, but the, the people on Center Street from Salem out to the pump station are, are still on Haverhill Water. They still pay their water bills to the city of Haverhill. Groveland doesn't have any water mains that go down Center Street. And the, the fire hydrants that are there are, are Haverhill hydrants supplied off of the water main. And it, it was, it's inconceivable to me that Haverhill would ever give up any water rights. Water is a precious commodity. And I, I just can't imagine that if this, obviously, this, it sounds like you've done your, your work notifying Boxford, notifying Groveland, obviously. But is it conceivable that Haverhill would, would try to reuse this? If, if it's cleaned up and it becomes a drinkable water source where they, where they still hold the water rights to it? That, that was one question. I'll let you answer that and then I, I follow up.
Every indication that we've got is that they're not interested. They may still hold the rights. If there was that hundred-year lease, it could still be in effect. But every indication that we've got from Haverhill Water is that they don't intend to use the pond number one. And they don't object to working with us to clean it up. So-
Well, that's understandable. But, but why should, why should it be up to, to the town of Groveland to be the sole source of seeking money out where, where Boxford owns a small portion and Haverhill has the water rights? I, I would think that, that they would, it would benefit both Haverhill and Boxford if that's cleaned up. And have you approached Haverhill or Boxford to see if they're interested in, in helping out?
Well, we have spoken with, with Boxford briefly. And Haverhill, as I mentioned, with the water department pretty extensively. And that's why we took this up with, first took it up with Representative Mira. He worked with us in the past to get us some funding to put a Beaver Deceiver in and some plantings along Lower Center Street. And then this year, thanks again to Dr. Mangiello through Bruce Tar's office and then we were able to hopefully access some more state funds. So, I, I would say that we are, we are not doing it alone. Fortunately, if we can get these state funds, we will be having match from the state towards what we're doing.
So is that your plan to continue the state route for funding, but also- So is that your plan to continue the state route for funding, but also working with the Boxford representatives and the Haverhill representatives to see if, what their interest is?
Right, yes, yes.
Are, are, are we, are we providing the, the proper access to Johnson's Pond under the great pond legislation? I, I've, I've been able to look up a few things and I've seen that, that some municipalities have been, have been sued for not providing a proper access as defined under the great ponds legislation. And whereas Johnson's Pond is, is a, is considered a great pond promoting fishing, boating, and following as, as, as for the, for the act, wouldn't it be a good idea if our public safety agencies, if we're promoting fishing and boating on Johnson's Pond, if our public safety agencies were able to launch a boat in a, in a, if we had a water emergency? And the, the two original accesses that we had, one boat ramp behind the old pump station is no longer accessible because of trees. The other access on the S curve heading out towards Boxford, there's some four-by-fours that are put in the way there. So basically, if there's a water accident on Johnson's Pond, our public safety agencies have no way of getting a boat out there.
Right. Well, I, I remember this was a discussion in the past. And so that's why we will be putting a new boat launch at the bottom of VZ Park. As a part of the, the weed removal, right now, the weeds of there are the worst. You can't really easily get into the pond at the bottom of VZ and into the middle of the pond or across the pond. So the, between these two projects, the weed removal and the VZ boat launch, there will be a new way to access the pond, especially for public safety.
Wouldn't it make more sense to open up beside the pump station? There's, there's a, there's a hot top road that goes down there. It actually used to go right around the pump station. There, there's, there's a gate there. But it, it could be cleaned up with some, removal of some of the trees that have fallen in and cleaned that up. Probably put a new, a new lock on that gate. It's certainly, you could launch a motorboat there, a, a rescue boat easier there than you would be able to over at, by VZ Park. And, and it's, it's already there, it just needs to be cleaned up.
Okay, so that's something that we should take up with Haverhill. The Haverhill Water Department still owns that property. They're in control of that property, so we can take that up with them and see, you know, worst case, I can put Jeff Gillan in touch with them after we find out what needs to be done.
I, I just wonder, are we, are, are we looking for a disaster where we're based upon promoting, and actually, I think it comes from one of your websites. Johnson's Pond accommodates small boats, canoes, and kayaks. And, but we have no way of getting in there in an emergency. I, I think that's something that should be done, even before the dredging out of, of that area over there. It seems like a quick fix to me.
Yeah. Okay, I, I'll check on that.
And it's certainly a lot deeper over there at the pump station than it is over at VZ Park. So you could put in a larger rescue boat.
Okay, I can check on that.
So, in interest of time, anything else, Mike?
No.
Anything else, Lisa? Bill, nothing else? So, yeah, if you can give an update, once you go back and hear from the state on funding, once their budget's passed, and then an update on your conversations with Haverhill and, and Boxford. And especially with the pump station, maybe not at the next meeting, I don't know how much, if the agenda's like the next meeting?
At least by July, I think you know.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, either the end of June or beginning of July, whatever the update is, we'll put you on the agenda and see where we are from there. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have the creation of Groveland Square Committee.
Mike, are these all going to be filed with the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs?
I will check because we, we did file with DEP, so I'll just find out if DEP is the one who we need to do.
And based upon the information that...
Yeah, EEOEA or EOEEA, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, yes.
And it looks like they also want to know where that, where that debris is going to be taken to. Thank you.
So the Groveland Square Committee, Denise, that...
You guys wanted it as an agenda item.
Right. So, I know that there has been some discussion, especially after the, was it the April nineteenth meeting that was here that we talked about?
Yeah, I think so.
With Senator Tarr and Mike and he left.
Oh, you were talking about that, okay, the Ad hoc committee?
Well, the, right. And then I did have a meeting with Greg Stark about some of the background on the, the square committee that was in place years ago that kind of disbanded. Everybody had a little bit of information and no one had all the information. I did have a meeting with Senator Tarr last Friday to talk about possibilities for grants or state funds or options for use of that, basically abandoned gas station and/or the post office. So I don't know if anybody else has any points to make, but I'm not opposed to doing something with the town. I just, with the property downtown, I just want to make sure that we're doing it correctly and we're not using taxpayer funds or more taxes from the town to do it with. So if we can get grants or, you know, CPC money or whatever it is that doesn't burden the town anymore, I'm happy to do something with that property downtown.
But we couldn't use tax funds anyway without getting it approved through town meeting, right?
Well, I mean, we have done that before for a debt exclusion for a fire truck or whatever else. I don't want to even consider that because I think lately we've been taxing the town too much. And to buy more property downtown using either a new tax or a new form, I would just not be in favor of. If we can get grants or state funding for whatever access we would be able to get through Senator Tarr or Representative Mira's office, then that, I'm all for that. He was going to look into some options that he had ideas for, so I don't know if anybody has any points to make. I know that there are some people in town that were part of that committee that was in place when the Route ninety-seven project was happening, when the Elm Park project was happening, when the bridge was being developed and built. So there were plans in place, everyone has a little bit. I don't think every one person has the total plan that was in place. So I guess this is a call for people to kind of provide what they have.
So for anyone who has an interest in being part of that?
Just the history, yeah, I mean, I get the history from one person. I like to get the history from several people so we can kind of get a consensus to move forward with possibilities for what has already been developed for possibility for doing with the gas station, the post office. Maybe there's already plans drawn up that we can go back to, but I really just don't have any information, so...
So, I have a question. Are you opposed to any CPA funds being used as well?
I'm not opposed to that, no, because that's already been taxed.
Okay.
I'm opposed to new taxes.
Okay. So, did we take a vote at the last meeting to form a committee like that?
You made the recommendation, Lisa, to add it to the agenda. I think because of that other meeting, the recommendation was made, if I recall, so that all of their meetings would be posted in, in minutes, and if people wanted to attend, they could. And that was sort of the basis of it. So it was asked to put on this agenda so you could discuss it. But I think in the interim, and I think, Mike, you were going to reach out to Greg Stark to see if he had, because I think you were trying to come up with a charge for the committee. So I don't know if you were going to do that in the interim or create the committee, but I just...
I don't even know that we're ready to create, create a committee.
Well, I, I, I think that we should because otherwise we don't alleviate those issues that you talked about. So even if the committee is still working on its charge, I think kind of formalizing that committee provides that mechanism that there's going to be the communication piece, which I think is a concern.
Right, well, I was going about it the opposite way, trying to put out a call to people who were part of that former committee that may still have the information that we can then kind of digest and then go forward and create a committee to move forward with, but I mean, if you think creating a committee...
Well, can we do both, though? Can we say that we want to create this committee and we want to invite anybody who's, who's previously to be part of this?
Yep.
Why don't we look up in some of the old records and see if there already is the, the committee, the Groveland Square Committee? It seems to me, I remember some time ago that we had one. And I'll just reach out to those people that were on it, see if they're still interested.
Do we have that?
I'm, I'm sure that we could find that.
I think that's part of the problem, we don't even have...
I don't know, I found a bridge committee, I found an Elm, Elm Park committee. I don't know that I found a square committee.
I think those, I think those two, the Elm Park Committee and the Bridge Committee are part of what was referenced. And I think maybe if we could, I don't know what mechanism there is to take the names from that and invite those people to be part of it.
I can ask Greg, I'll ask him.
Yeah, well, that we can go through the town report, but I just don't think there was an actual square. I think they were different parts of the square had a committee.
Right. Because I think the Elm Park portion was private funded from, separate from Route ninety-seven and the bridge. Because I think that there was their own committee.
It sounds to me, though, like a lot of those people worked on both multiple committees.
They probably did.
So maybe just inviting people from each of those committees and opening it up to them.
Yeah, I, I don't even know where to start.
Greg Stark was the chairman at one point of the Bridge Committee.
Yeah, I can ask him if he has at least the members.
He came in before us one time and he said he would have all those names.
So if he was kind of the de facto leader, maybe we ask him to maybe formalize who he's working with and we can send invites out to those other groups to maybe reach out to Greg, if Greg's willing to take on that role.
Yeah, I don't know that he's willing to take on that role, but he would at least have some information to, to start with. So I'll ask him right now.
Mike, when you, when you met with Senator Tarr, did he talk to you about any kind of funding or did he know of anything?
Um, not specifically. He did have some ideas about what could be done with that land. The problem is, you know, you can't really just take the gas station to do something with. You have to take the post office and the gas station, which creates another problem. You know, will the people be upset by the post office leaving? Or could we move the post office to another location in downtown? Because it still generates revenue as tax base for the town. So there's a lot of moving parts and you can't kind of go in blind without thinking about the ramifications to, you know, getting rid of both places without, without moving one. So he did have several ideas. We're supposed to connect later this week, next week, to see what he was able to find. He had some legal avenues that he wanted to pursue and then go from there. But he, he seems to think that at least we can put together some kind of proposal or an outline of what, you know, a couple of options, what we think might be worthwhile, and then present them to the town and see what their thoughts are.
Yeah, we had the conversation before. I know the, the insurance company was going to be deeded twenty spaces, I think, out of that project because that was the kind of the deal they made to use the entrance to get through there.
Twenty spaces? Okay, so I saw the plan at that meeting that I was at, and there definitely wasn't twenty spaces. There was...
To the insurance company, is that what you said?
The insurance company was getting deeded spaces to use that entrance when this, when they did that project.
Right.
When they came before us, there were spaces that were going to be deeded.
Was it twenty?
Maybe it was, I shouldn't say twenty, maybe, whatever, how many other spaces there were, but there was spaces going to be deeded.
I know there were spaces promised and deeded, if that was going to happen. I don't know how many it actually was.
Part of that project to be able to use their entrance.
So my understanding was that in exchange for allowing that access, that there was going to be some change as to where the access was going to be and that they were, and, and they were willing to cooperate with that process if the access was changed. That's what I vaguely recall about the insurance company. I didn't recall that there was a commitment that spaces would go to them, that it was more of an issue of where the access is right now creates a, a safety issue and that there would need to be a change in the access.
Mike, I do remember when it came, and actually, since Mike Dempsey's here, he might shed some light on it. When it came to the board a few years ago, there was, because part of the land that the post office is currently on does belong to the insurance company. And there was discussion then about if, if a parking lot or some type of parking that there would be spaces dedicated to the insurance company. I don't know that there was a set number, but because even by moving the entrance, I guess closer to the gas station, it still is going to be a portion of their land. Because their property kind of goes through that, I think, the corner of the post office. Is that correct, Mike, is that?
It's right up to the edge of the post office.
Okay.
They didn't, what I heard, remember is the, right now, where the entrance to the gas station is, they don't want that entrance to be there. They want the entrance to be farther up toward the insurance company because it's a better place for traffic than what have you of the like. And you're right, the build, the, the post office building is right, that's the property line right there. And as they turned the corner, they needed to get some of the insurance land in order to do it. That, that's down the road conversation.
So I would propose, and I'm willing to make a motion, that if you're willing to reach out to Greg Stark to see if he can provide a proposal about what might be the best way to move forward, even if it isn't him as the chair, since he has somewhat spearheaded those efforts, that he could at least provide some type of plan for how he thinks that this might work moving forward in terms of coordination.
Yeah, I already reached out to him.
Okay. So, we want to just wait to hear back from him?
Yeah, I don't know that we need a motion to, we don't really have any idea of where we're even starting. As far as I'm concerned, I just want to see that, you know, if they, the plan is to do something with the area downtown, which again, I am all for cleaning it up and providing more parking or a park or boat ramp or whatever we're going to do there, just to make sure that we do it correctly and we make sure that whatever things we do, that we, you know, look at it second, third, fourth steps and how it's going to affect the downtown and the flow. Any other discussion on this? Ed?
I know I'm all set, thank you.
Lisa, you're all set?
All set.
Okay. Trying to get back on time. Department reports updated, Lisa, I think this is something you wanted.
Yeah, so what I had seen is that it appears that the fire department, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that the fire department provides a monthly report?
Yes.
But I didn't see that other departments provide monthly reports, and I'd like to see us kind of get information from other departments as well.
An actual verbal report or a written report?
It could be either.
I think, Denise, don't they provide you with information, sort of?
No, so the way it was working was the departments, when the board wanted updates, they would come before the, they would come here to a meeting and publicly talk about it. Anytime the board has asked an individual department for something, we usually get a written document. I think with the fire department, it was easier for him to do written reports than come in here. He had monthly meetings with the board. Sometimes they were a little adversarial. So I think in order to just keep the board abreast of what was happening, he decided it was best and the board decided it was best to just have a monthly sort of write-up from him. That hasn't been asked of other departments in the past. Like I said, if there's something needed, the board invites the men to talk about it.
I guess my concern is like, I know a lot about what's happening at the fire department, but I don't know anything about what, for instance, is happening with the police department and public safety. And I, I, I feel some obligation to kind of be aware, at least on a general level, of kind of the basic going-ons of that department. You know, I don't know with Bob Eric Halian, you know, what the, what the procedure is for him to be providing updates on, you know, different projects that he's doing. So for me, that would be helpful because then I would be more informed if people are asking me questions. Because right now, I don't feel that I would be in a position to answer very many questions about any of those issues.
That's, I mean, did you want to make a motion on that, or?
Yeah, so I would just like to hear from the other board members what particular departments you think have the most kind of dynamic, you know, like water and electric probably don't have a ton of things going on on a regular basis?
Not on a regular basis, but we did have the electric company moving, so that, you know, actually, you know, affected the town. We did have the projects for the water and sewer on Gardner Street, down on Main Street. So, you know, we needed to get information and updates on that. So there is time to time when there are projects happening that we would like to have updates on, the process, the funding, the timeline, any snafus, those kind of things, so...
What's been the mechanism for that?
Just a request. So I don't know that they would actually have updates monthly on a regular basis.
I mean, I'd be even okay with quarterly, but I'd like to have more information because I think it's, it tends to be piecemeal. I know that Denise, you pretty much know everything that's going on. But I, I feel that there's some responsibility, being a member of the Board of Select, to do my due diligence. I can't be constantly asking you questions all the time. I don't feel that that's fair to you. So I...
We all do it.
I hear you, but I feel that there is some responsibility on the part of the board, not to know every minutia, but to know kind of generally what's going on.
Right, and when Bill was the chair, his goal was to have every department come here quarterly. Um, and we started that in the beginning with inviting the different departments, and then that kind of phased out a little bit. I think just because other business became more relevant and more time consuming, that we didn't have time to add every department on an ongoing basis.
Especially if there wasn't major projects happening where they didn't need to have an update.
Right, but that's what started originally, is they were all coming before here on a certain period of time, so.
So when I was the chair of the, the library trustees, we would get a report from the director on a monthly basis telling us, you know, that kind of what's happened that month. Um, and for instance, like with our police department, we're identified as being one of the safest communities in the state. But I don't know, like, what is that based upon? So a lot of that, for me, it would be helpful to know, like, in an average month, what is the number of arrests? What is the number of, you know, violent crime that's happening in the community, if any? Um, I just don't know a lot about what that information is based upon.
Yeah, I think maybe instead of, uh, I mean, we could try the quarterly thing, but again, we, we did that and kind of phased out, because either they didn't really have much to update us on, or like Denise said, there's other things that took precedence. I would say that, um, if you're looking for specific information from a board or a committee, that you just go and ask them.
So, okay, that's fair enough, but then it doesn't really become part of the public record for other people to see?
No, but you could do an update if you wanted to have time. Say, hey, you know, I talked to the water department, this is what's going on that I found out. Or I talked to the police chief about, you know, information that I was searching out, and this is what's going on. Jeff's pretty eager to come in here and talk to us anytime that we ask, so.
And I think the other piece of that is that it totally puts the onus on us. Whereas I would like to be more proactive and not be the person that's always chasing other people down for information. And I don't have a frame of reference, but I'd be willing to reach out to, for instance, maybe West Newbury or some other communities and see maybe how they do it. And maybe brainstorm some ideas that other communities use to kind of stay abreast of what's going on. Um, cause I don't wanna, uh, place an undue burden on departments if that's not a customary procedure. But at the same time, I'd like to, you know, get information without necessarily feeling like I have to reach out to everybody each time I wanna.
I don't know that, um, you may have a tough time finding it, just because I think in other communities that have a more professional structure of government, they have a town administrator or manager that would deal with the day-to-day and the departmental business. Um, the boards really wouldn't get involved in that. Um, so West Newbury, you may, West Newbury and Merrimack may have some. Um, but, uh, my conversations with the finance directors there, um, I would be surprised if there was anything formal in either one of those towns with regards to what you're looking at.
If we were gonna do something on that line, maybe we, we'd come up with a sheet or something that once a month they would fill out and answer the questions? I mean, if there was some major like budget.
Or even a format, yes, I agree.
A piece of paper saying, okay, we wanna know what your budget was this month. I, I mean, we'd have to come up with some kind of a criteria for questions to ask each department. What projects you have coming online or what projects are finishing? I mean, there's a million questions we could ask them.
Yeah, what would you have pending? But I think we could develop a template that was somewhat generic, you know, what do you have pending? Any, you know, extraordinary situations that have occurred this month that, you know, would you like to share, positive or negative? Um, but I think without that structure that we have, I don't feel that I'm doing a great job when I'm not aware of what's going on. So for me, that, that is about feeling as though I have a certain responsibility.
I mean, I can certainly reach out to departments to see if they can start with something, you know, and at least provide an update as to, you know, right now. Um, and then if you guys like the looks of it or, you know, want to either have them in to discuss it further or wanna have it on a more regular basis. I, I think it's gonna be hard to develop a standard, because every department's gonna be very different. Um, and what might be newsworthy to one department might not be to another. So I think sort of telling them like the highlights of what's gone on, any projects that are, you know, nearing completion or something like that, you know, might be better in just sort of their words.
Yeah, so like the, for instance, the police station, you've got the, you know, the, the range that's coming. You've had some changes in personnel. Like, these are things that like I, I know are happening through word of mouth, but I don't know for certain, like, well, gee, this is what's happening. That's the type of thing, so that's the type of thing that I'm interested in.
Yep.
So that would just be submitted as correspondence then?
Yes.
Which I think would be better initially. I would think we, what we should do is probably do that as correspondence, and then if there's further questions that we wanna ask, then we could ask them to come in and kind of clarify. But I think to initially go out and say...
What's gonna happen as soon as they're, they're gonna ask what questions do they want?
No, I think if I just say sort of an update of their department, I think, I mean, I would say do you want every department?
Cause it sounds like they may be providing it to you anyway.
And they know the department.
Yeah, I mean, if I'll ask for stuff or if there's something big, but they'll copy the board on those types of things. But, um, do you want every department? Cause I don't know that we'll get stuff from like smaller departments. You know, where, where there's maybe a board and not a manager in the department. I just, just so I know. Or do you wanna just do like the key, you know, water, highway, police, fire?
I'm fine with starting with the key ones.
Okay.
And if it feels like there's a gap, you know, maybe we can revisit that. But, I mean, for instance, even the library, that director's report, I don't know if that gets forwarded to, it would be nice for the library trustees to forward their director's report each month. So that the board was aware of what's going on.
Okay. Is that...
But I'm open to your ideas in terms of what might work.
Okay, yeah, like I said, I think if I just reach out to the departments and sort of ask them for an update of, you know, current status of their department, I think, I think that'll be a good gauge to see what they provide you, and if you want more or less information, and then how frequent you want it. I think that would be a good start.
Well, how frequently? How frequent do you want an update?
Um...
Quarterly? Starting with the year July first?
Yeah, I guess that would be fine.
Well, I can ask for an update now, so that we get something, you know, maybe in June to sort of maybe close out the year or something.
Or maybe even, um, to close out the year and then looking forward, this is what we're anticipating for twenty eighteen type of thing.
What's gonna happen though is just like when I used to have them come in before us, we got busy, we're, we're only here, you know...
That's why it's only gonna be correspondence, yeah.
Four Mondays, four Mondays out of the month. And then what happens, we get busy with tax season and what have you, and then it kind of falls by the wayside. So what I was saying is if we did it, I was gonna say we should make it so every quarter it's here. That we don't have to keep remembering to ask for it. It, it automatically, it's protocol, it's gonna come in. But again, what questions do you ask?
Well, I think, I think Denise's recommendation of a starting point of letting them identify what they think might be important. And then if we wanna add to that, that that could be a great starting place. And then, um, you know, see what we get, and then we can kind of tweak it from there. But then, if we decide that it's something that we like and that it works well, we can put something in writing that we respectfully request that this be a procedure that's followed on an ongoing basis.
Ed, you had a question?
Uh, strike that. Strike that. Okay.
So do we need to make a motion for that, or is that just something we can do?
It's up to you. I mean, do you wanna have it formalized in a motion?
No, let's keep it...
So you want me to start with police, highway, water, library, sort of those?
Fire, well, fire, yeah.
Well, we already get fire, but so those four we'll start with?
Yeah. And then we'll see how it goes and maybe go adjust it.
Just a question on that. Didn't, didn't, um, in my recollection that we, the former, uh, police chief, was in his contract that he provide monthly updates, but I don't, I don't believe we ever got many.
Um, I'll check. I don't know if it says monthly. I think it says it's just their duty to provide updates.
It did say monthly.
Okay.
I don't know what the current contract says, um, but that, that's just, I think going back to just being aware of kind of what's going on.
All right. Moving on to appointments to the board and committees' policy review. Was this about, um, rotating the chair and the vice chair for each department?
Well, it was about the policy you have in place, that whether we're keeping it, it's, is the way it's written about limiting terms of actual board members, or if you wanted to make it just about the chair position. Currently, it's all board members that are appointed fall into this policy.
It was my impression that, um, it was just to rotate the chair and vice chair and who was running the meetings and, you know, get new thought process and new ideas in there without kind of stifling some, um, creativity or moving forward. So I wasn't, I wasn't in favor of having people completely removed and then having new boards put on. I was in favor of just rotating to make sure whoever was running the meetings, um, was changing, kind of like this board.
So I would agree with that, and I think if, if for some reason you think that it may have been implemented, that there was the six-year maximum, we could just take a new vote.
Yeah, so the policy, I gave you all copies. That is the actual policy that the board voted on. Um, it was taken from, um, Selectman McDonald's had taken some of the policies and pieced it together, and then this is what the board voted. So you'll see under item two, it clearly talks about all appointed members, limiting them to, um, six consecutive terms of a one-year or two consecutive terms of a three-year. And then it talked about attendance and things like that. So if you're looking at just discussing the chair, you may wanna either, um...
Well, I'm not opposed to people staying on a board for ten years. Uh, I'm just opposed to one person being the chair for ten years, right? So, um, for someone to be on a board for ten years, there's a lot of information, a lot of history and a lot of background that they have access to that's not necessarily written down anywhere. Um, so it's valuable to keep those people engaged in those boards or committees. Um, it's just that, you know, those same people shouldn't be in charge of the boards or committees for an eternity. It should be rotated and, you know, kind of mixed up a little bit.
So would you say, Mike, that you're fine with the other pieces of this, and you would just like to modify the piece regarding the limits on members and not chairs?
Say that again? Limit the members? No, I, I would like to limit the chairs.
Yeah, you wanna, you want to revisit and modify the limitation on members, but keep the limitations on chairs.
Right, as far as being chair or vice chair, but not necessarily being limited to, um, being on a particular board or committee.
So Denise, what would that require us to take a vote on, number two?
Yes, I think if you wanna keep everything else the same, I think you would just vote to eliminate bullet item two from that policy.
Okay.
Well, let's have a further discussion. Uh, Bill, do you want to say something?
Um, I, the thing that I think it should just be the chairs and the vice chairs get rotated, leave the board members alone. Because as you said, and as we know, we're on a board, you have a wealth of knowledge. They can help the new chair or vice chair and what have you. Um, I think it should just be a matter of rotating the chairs and vice chairs and leave everybody else alone. And then put a time on the vice chair and chair, like if it's a year or, you know, three-year term or whatever it is, you know, how long they're gonna be in that position for. Simplify it.
Simple's good. Ed, anything?
Uh, no, I'd go along with that, I guess.
Lisa?
I agree. I think, I think unless we wanna retweak this whole thing, at this point, I would just make a motion to remove number two. And if we wanna revisit any of the other criteria at a future date, we can do that. But at least that will, at this point, not create a logjam where every position has to be, uh, reappointed.
You wanna make a motion?
So I make a motion that under this policy regarding the appointments to boards and committees, that we remove item number two.
You wanna read that?
Which relates to the tenure of appointments, um, and limits terms of memberships, and remove, uh, the restrictions regarding length of membership for board members.
You got a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, I think if you read it, it says, um, "To provide, uh, fresh opportunities for fresh faces from time to time while ensuring that all boards, committees, and commissions are served by experienced men and women, is, it is desirable but not mandatory to limit terms of membership." The following, uh, is agreed to. One-year appointments, no more than six consecutive terms. Three-year appointments, no more than two. Any member who has completed his or her allotted term of service may be reappointed after a one-year interval or reappointed in the absence of any other applicant. Uh, I, I, I think that, that covers somebody that wants to stay on or be on their, their term.
So my only concern about that is the last sentence kind of creates a burden. I think we're going through this right now, where Denise is having to reach out to everybody to find out whether they're interested in, would we do that anyway?
We would. I think part of the problem is when this policy went in place, everybody that's been on a board longer than six years assumed they were done. Um, and that's sort of where we've been in limbo. Is that the case? Is it not the case? Um, I think if that's not your intention, I think then maybe other language should go in there. But by keeping this, it's still, people don't know until their appointment comes up whether or not you guys are gonna exercise that exemption, if you will. Um, so it's still kind of like, will they be reappointed, will they not be reappointed?
So they prefer to just assume that they're gonna be reappointed until they are not?
Right. Ri- or, well, no, I'm just saying, this, this would make it up to the board to decide whether or not you wanna use the exemption in some boards, some other boards. Do you wanna leave someone on for six years if you keep that? Cause it's not mandatory based on that language. So I think it just kind of makes it...
So Mike, my question regarding this, is there such a demand or a supply of people that wanna be on boards that we are encountering the issue where multiple people are vying for one appointment?
So we have actually, up until now, been almost the capacity of all of our, of all of our boards and committees. Um, in doing this, um, reappointments, a lot of people have stepped down from board, so they do not wish to be reappointed. So there will be a lot of vacancies. Um, so right now, we don't have a lot of people vying for certain boards.
That's where I think we should go back and keep it simple to the chairs and vice chairs.
I think one of the reasons that this came up originally was, uh, questions from, from townspeople is, uh, they become frustrated. Uh, how do we get rid of people that are on some of the appointed boards? That, uh, they don't like the way that things are working. They say if it's an elected position, they can vote the person out of office. If it's an appointed position, uh, how do they get rid of them? And, uh, they're appointed by the board of selectmen, so they have to get a hold of the board of selectmen and not reappoint them. And I think that was one of the reasons that it, it, it came about. Uh, some people serve on boards for twenty years, they've become enriched in the boards, and they, new people just didn't wanna get on because they said, well, gee whiz, you know, this person's been on for twenty-five years, uh, you know, how am I gonna add anything to this? You know, they're not gonna listen to me as a, as a newbie. And, uh, I, I, that was one of the reasons that it, that it came up.
So I think that makes perfect sense. However, I think the responsibility really falls on the board of selectmen to ensure that that's not happening. Um, so I don't, I don't know, you know...
They would fall into number six, right? And we could just decide not to.
Right, well, fall, you reappoint, so you could just choose not to reappoint a board member if that's, if you're getting complaints or you feel that that's the case. That's your right as the board, you just don't reappoint them.
What's the error, you know?
And most, most, right, most positions are annual. Uh, we do have some boards and committees that have three-year appointments. Um, but yes, that's at the sole discretion of this board anytime.
Yeah, so there is a, a clause that, you know, created so we can avoid that.
So, Ed, yeah, do you feel that that has worked at all in the past? Do you have concerns that the board of selectmen can't kind of serve as that gatekeeper?
Uh, well, it, it, I'm just wondering if people don't apply for the position because they're, uh, somebody that's already in that position, and they figure that, that maybe the board of selectmen, uh, wouldn't appoint some new person if there's somebody already in there. And that, uh, I mean, I'd go along with getting rid of that, the number two. Uh, I'm just giving a little history on, on where that, where that came from.
So maybe we can revisit that and think about the language in a different way, um, that still meets what you're referencing, without kind of creating a situation where we have a ton of vacancies with no one to fill positions? Maybe we can look at that. I mean, I'm willing to look at that language and see if there's a way to maybe...
But I, I think one way to do it was, I, I know that, uh, a note went out to, uh, a, anybody that was, uh, up for, uh, appointment this coming year, it would, the note went out to those people, but it, I, I think it also should have gone out to the, the general public is that if we have openings on board A, board B, board C, uh, if you're interested, uh, apply.
I think though, that's on the homepage.
That's always on our website. So people can go on our website and check off boards and committees that they'd like to apply for. And it doesn't tell them that there are no vacancies. I have, I had a running list of vacancies, but they can just apply, um, for anyone, and then I put it in a pile, and if there's a vacancy, I forward it to the board. But we haven't had any that are sort of pending appointment, because we were at capacity and no one's been applying for anything.
So we had a motion. Do we have a second?
Bill seconded it.
All right. Any further discussion? I mean, we can, we can do this in piecemeal as we, as we go through, but this was just for section two, right, basically?
Right, right.
Yeah, it's a start.
Okay, so no further discussion, so all in favor on Lisa's, um, motion on number two? All in favor?
Yes.
So then as we, as we run into different issues and problems, we can start to check off some other options on here and, and, uh, retweak this as we, as they come up. I don't think the issues that you're talking about, Ed, happen too often, but I know what you're referring to. Um, I haven't heard of that happen very often since I've been here. Okay, eight o'clock, we have the recreation committee. Go ahead. I didn't know who was talking.
So Mike Oden, uh, farmer order. Um, and so it's, it's, um, a couple of things I wanna make sure we clarified to start. A couple of things you wanna cover tonight as well. But I think for the clarification respect... A couple of things you want to cover tonight as well, but I think for the clarification respect, I mean, we watched the last meeting. Use the word disappointing would be, um, I love to say that. What I mean by that is I think that there was a lot of misinformation provided about the board. There were a lot of people that, um, turned a lot of hours and worked very hard to put it down and for the youth programs. We didn't ask to step down, no one asked not to, to be part of the board going forward. There was communication over really this, the issue that we were being asked to do was the funding for the ongoing maintenance of the pines. That's one thing that we said, that, since the questions weren't addressed, that we didn't feel that we were, we wanted to be in a position to assume that responsibility as a volunteer board. So not that we don't want to be part of the youth programs or run the youth programs as the, the committee has done for, for years, but we don't want to have the responsibility to raise the money to maintain the pines down there.
Okay.
So that's the clarification I want to make sure we cover.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, really want to make sure we covered tonight is the whole thing about the funding for the pines, for the, the fields that were put in place at the town meeting last year. Um, so I know, you know, from work from Denise, that the well has been contracted by Denise.
Yes.
Okay, um, and that contract, do you, Dave, when is it gonna be done?
Um, I don't, I was gonna follow up with him today, and I just didn't have a chance. Um, we're also trying to work around the schedule because obviously it's a busy time, those fields are in use seven days a week. Um, so we have to try and figure out when, um, I know when they were going to do it last year. Um, they were not comfortable drilling, obviously, while people are there, so we're trying to figure out what the best time is to get that done.
Does it let up at all in the summer?
No.
No, gets worse?
It's seven days a week from like April through October, pretty much.
And do they, I'm sorry, do they, do they have, um, like a timeline on how long it would take them to do the drilling? Like, they couldn't do it like after three o'clock or something for four hours, or?
Yeah, probably not, but we have night games, we have night practices.
All right, that's right.
So, I have the schedule of everything, I just got a new, the softball schedule today of when their games will be, so hopefully that's everything that is going on that I have and we can kind of work around it, but I know that was a concern of theirs before is, obviously, when they're drilling and um, they were very concerned with kids being down there, so, just something.
On that note, would it be possible, if needed, to relocate a couple of games so we could get a window in order to get that done? If it worked out?
During the, um, I know the summer would be a little more difficult.
Right.
We do have times when, I know Doug sent you the message on timing on that, or he's gonna get back to a timing on that.
Yep, he sent that to me.
Um, he did, okay.
Just an option.
We know the times on that, then we just have to kind of lay out practice, but practice can usually work around, especially summer times. You know, while school's in session, nothing goes on down there until school's out.
Right.
In, in the day, but once again, the June comes and kids are out, then it'll be the summer program.
Exactly, so in the interest of trying to get things done, it might, it might be beneficial if we could slide some things around to create a window in order to get that done?
Yeah, I think that would possibly.
Good.
Nothing is done before five-thirty down there, nobody's on the field before, the high school doesn't use the softball field this year because they only have one team. We start at five-thirty, we practice on the weekends, so.
Right, but we have lacrosse, soccer, we have everyone.
And I think they have four o'clock on, so if it's a seven o'clock to four, which is most contractors' hours anyways, it shouldn't interfere. Uh, but for the softball field itself, I don't think there's any work being done on it, but I understand the parking and the big trucks who build.
I'm just saying, it's, if, the more flexible we can be, the sooner we can get in there.
The school's gonna be done in two weeks, so.
Four weeks.
Yeah, we have done playoffs down on June twelfth, uh, there's two teams, Bethany's team, my Sunday three team. Uh, but those will all be six o'clock games like they are now.
Mm-hmm.
In the summertime, it's six fifteen and eight o'clock, depending on how the schedule comes out. And summertime is no practice, so it's lacrosse and football, whatever else.
Right.
I don't know, Shay would know that he's on a business trip, so.
Right.
He knows that schedule.
Well, whenever we get an idea for what the contractor thinks, um, you know, just any options we have in order to create a window so we can get it done and not push it off until September, would be beneficial.
Monday through Friday, seven to four is my open as far as I know.
Okay, we'll have to look at the schedule.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
No, it's all right, so, so if you look at the, the, the figures, the things you provided, so it started with two twelve, two eighty-nine. The current well commitment is eleven nine hundred, and then if you look at the remaining between the power for the well, the pump, cost estimate, you know, the total package for putting the well in is about fifty-eight grand. So that would leave about a hundred and fifty-three thousand and change remaining for field work. Well, it's not gonna get us very far, right, but it will certainly get us in the direction where we want to go.
Well, and if I may just stop you for a minute, Mike, um, so those numbers don't include irrigation, so that we have to still tack on as well?
So, um, a, a couple of thoughts, but, you know, Bill, you and I have spoken. And I've got a gentleman that's interested in helping us out, I'm looking for one of the persons, and I've got a couple phone call over that. And so, um, we had talked about looking at, the problem's been that middle field, I'll call it the middle field, so you have the football utility field, then you got the field beside that.
Mm-hmm.
Where the.
That goes up the hill?
Yeah, well, no, the, so think about it this way, if you, if you're standing down and your back to the current baseball field.
Yeah.
To the right to the football utility field, the plan was to put a softball field in the center one.
Yes.
And then leave the top hill up here taking. So, we've run into a lot of issues with that center field because there's a catch basin that's in, in play.
Yeah.
You know, we have to give, we've got the retaining pond that holds water and kind of a danger to kids and everything that's sitting in the back corner. So we looked at, last week, looking at putting the field in the top of the hill, moving the field to the top of the hill would be a better choice. So we're gonna mock that out and lay that out just to see what it looks like and get a feel for it. I looked it out a couple of times during the day for, for sun setting and stuff like that, so we can figure that out, but if we think that field would be a better location rather than trying to squeeze something in the field that's got, um, we'll call it environmental health problems down on that field.
Will, will moving that field to the top field, um, affect the irrigation or anything like that?
It's gonna be that of the pump that can pump for that field.
Yeah, because we weren't planning to go that far over.
Is that gonna increase the size of the pump and the cost of the pump?
Well, no, but that's why we moved the well to the other location, because we were gonna get the utility field and the other field. Um, because originally the well was gonna be in that area.
Right.
We were moving it because of the proximity to what needed to be irrigated, so, I don't know, I'll have to look at that. Those need to run, I don't know. I don't know, Bill can weigh in on, I, I don't, I don't know about irrigation.
The more farther you go, the less, the more you pump, the farther you go away, the less pressure you're gonna get at the heads.
Well, I know we originally talked about the well being behind the playground, which you put it. Then you have the football utility field that's, that's far away.
Right, which is why we moved the well location to deal with those other two fields that knocked up.
You don't know, you don't know until that well's drilled what it's gonna actually pump and what it's gonna be able to do anyway, so like, when you and I talk, they may end up having to put another well down there from, you don't know, you don't know what it's gonna bring up, you don't know until it's drilled.
So there's a possibility that you could drill a well closer to this top field and it couldn't pump enough water down to the utility field, you'd have to put another well down there.
The well that we're gonna put in, you don't know until it's finally drilled, until they know the amount of water it's bringing up. You know what I'm saying, it could be perfectly fine, at the Bagno School, we had to go down another way, another four, five hundred feet to get more water. And you don't know until you start drilling, they don't, they can't touch.
What about the current pump that's there, well?
That's, I, I think it's pretty much like, you can't add any more to that because it's got the town hall, it's got the fields that are there now, and that's why we keep having the problem with it, it's at, you know, it's full.
Capacity.
I know it sucks insane for the pump.
Yeah, that's gotta be addressed with a filter system.
Right, it just needs, yeah, when the, when the well company comes out, we just need them to extend the metal casing further down because that's the problem, is the metal casing only goes so far, that's why it's sucking in the debris, so we need that casing extended.
So that's gonna be fixed as well.
That's our plan.
Mike, to go back.
The plan was that well was gonna do baseball and town hall?
What one?
No, the existing well does, baseball, softball, town hall, the fire station, the, the existing well does all that now.
Okay.
The new well was going to be the utility field, the new softball field.
Right.
That's what we were looking at with that new well.
Okay.
But that's why we had moved it closer to the utility field, because instead of putting it at the playground and running all the irrigation lines all that far, we figured, let's get closer so we don't have to extend that irrigation. Um, but now you're saying it might be a possibility, possibility the other way.
Yeah, I, I honestly think it was a good idea because I think the issue we've, like I said, we've run into that, that middle field area is, is the danger of that open pond and mosquitoes associated potentially with it as well for the kids playing, but the danger of the little kids around that one, but also the catch basin and the slope of that one, you got all the drainage coming down through that area, so that could end up being an area that's gonna collect a lot of, a lot of water and a lot of problems, so we thought the higher one, closer to the road, more visibility, bigger field area, and already pretty flat.
Yep.
Would probably be a better location overall.
Okay.
And you, that, that was just the initial plan, you haven't done anything yet, right?
That's the idea, yeah, we're gonna.
Can we wait on that until we figure out what the irrigation situation might be?
Yeah, but we won't know that until the well is drilled, so we gotta pump.
Right, exactly.
Who's on first?
So, 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 so Mike, to go back to what we originally talked about.
Yeah.
We got about a hundred and fifty-three, and like we talked about, we gotta pick a field and, and, and zero in on it, and I know what we're saying is that well may not, or may be able to take the upper field, we don't know, you know what I'm trying to say? So, we're gonna go back for money wherever that second field goes, we, we know we don't have enough money for the second field, we're gonna have to go back for it. At that point in time, if we have to go back for another well money or whatever, I don't know what to say, maybe this well, when we get it drilled, we'd be perfectly fine. You don't know, you know what I mean, but, um, we need to get started somewhere, I mean, what field, what field do we want to do first, what's the, what's the best field?
Well, I think we need to know what the water's gonna be to, so we know what we can do.
Right.
That's gonna, then, because then, all the irrigation guys I've talked to have said, it depends on what your pressure points are as to what you can put in, how far you can throw it, and how many edge you need, and what the cost would be associated with it.
Mm-hmm.
So it's gonna be a matter of knowing what the capacity of, you know, what the gallons per minute can be out of that well, to know what we can do. So we're kind of in that waiting game till that's done. Um, but we're just kinda do, trying to do some planning in the meantime, so we know, so we kind of know what, what, we're, we're looking at, what could be the next steps.
Okay.
Well, on the well itself, do we, for the contract, is there any, guarantees probably the wrong word, but is there any commitment as to you dig a well, but you're gonna put the pump in right away, how do you know what the flow rate is and what it can stand, how do they do that?
They have a, they have a tester, because they did it.
It goes, it goes to their truck.
Yeah.
It goes to their truck.
We saw it, we actually went down and saw it at Bagno when they were producing water, and then they would check it and it wasn't enough, so we had, we made them go deeper and then we checked it again, so they have a way to check along.
But they only do one spot, they don't like test different areas to see where they get the most?
No, that's a different thing altogether, so the, the land was originally doused, I think that's what you call it, and by the playground was the prime location. Um, but the playground area created some conflicts with, that's where the future tennis courts might go. They didn't like it so close to the playground, there were issues with that potential location. So we went out the first two times, I think, on that location, one time we didn't get any bids. Um, second time it was, um, there were concerns with the playground and things like that. So, again, when we sort of reevaluated where the fields were gonna go, we said, well, let's move it and take that location out of the equation altogether. We do get very good output from the other well that's sort of in the back closer to the lake, so we figured if we're moving it closer to the lake, the hope would be that we'll get more water, or a good production of water.
Close to the river?
The river, yes.
I'm like, is it a lake?
Yes, the lake.
Where have I been?
Is that the detention pond he was talking about?
Yeah, that's right.
The mosquito pond?
We're gonna start that out there.
I wanted to see if you were listening.
Yeah, yeah, there we go.
You did, you passed.
There we go. So, so I just wanted, so that, that still would be the, the plan, so I guess the question would be, how do we best work with you guys so that we keep this moving and, and, um, and, you know, so we know the well, you let me know that.
I guess that's the next step is to get out.
Yep, so the wells in order, I, I think I told you the, um, all the, um, the transformer and all the parts for the electricity, uh, the light department's putting on RFP four, but that's all in progress. Um, and then once the well is in, then we'll go up to bid on the pump. Um, because we did it the opposite way at Bagno, we bid it all together, and it turned out that we needed a different kind of pump, and it wasn't, it wasn't the most productive thing we could have done.
Okay.
Um, so we were advised to bid it separately so that we could get a good pump. Um, we put in the better three-phase power down there so we could accommodate a larger, more, I guess, productive pump. Um, so we're trying to do those things proactively.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, that's where it stands right now, and then once that's done, then the next step would be irrigation.
Right.
And figuring out where and when.
To go back to what you said, it's kind of, we're kind of in a, in a catch twenty-two to see what the well produces and what we can do with the well, so really, nothing can, nothing can really press forward down there, and what I was trying to do in the past was I was trying to talk to, getting a committee together or whatever, because we have a certain amount of money set aside to maintain the place that's being little the way at, we don't have any money reimbursed on that account. So, you know, it's not gonna run out tomorrow, but on the same token, we, we can't keep taking from something and not putting it back. So, that's kind of what I was saying, trying to either talk about fundraising, what happened. So, in, in the conversation, uh, from last time we met, we discussed having you guys come in tonight or what have you. I talked to the Georgetown, um, rec commission, they call it.
Because I reached out to them and they never responded to me.
Well, I got ahold of Dave Showers from there, and what they do is they put sixty-five thousand dollars into their annual town budget from their, you know, to, into their rec thing, committee, the commission, they don't call it committee, they call it commission. And what he was saying is, they will come up with projects, they know X amount of dollars of that a year cost to maintain.
Yeah.
The lawnmowers are bought from the rec commission, given to their highway, the highway mows and takes care of their parks and does other um, places throughout Georgetown for the price of the mowers. X amount of dollars, say they're gonna do an, an upgrade to one of their fields, say it's only twenty thousand this year. Out of the sixty-five, they do that, and they know that the other money is set aside for running the parks and what have you, and that's how they do it. They do, they did take their ice cream store, um, they leased it out to a, an ice cream vendor, they get a little bit of money from there. Um, they have their pavilion for music and what have you, they bring in a few bucks there a year.
So is that a line item, line, line item budget, sixty-five grand every year?
They get it from the town.
Yeah, and I can't find their budget, and I put in requests for their budget and I haven't gotten.
Do they have a, so those are all volunteer positions?
They're elected.
So there was a Cindy, when I went to their website, there was a person that was in charge, and it said Cindy Rec, is that a person?
Yeah, there's two girls and, there's two girls there, and I can't think of her name, and Dave Showers is now the, the vice chair, but, um.
And is that, do you think that that position's a PIP, they're all voluntary?
They're, I, I think they're elected, I think.
Yeah, I believe they were, they formed a commission and elected them as the commissioners.
Okay.
So, and I asked him, do you guys get into the daily, um, you know, taking care of who's in use the field, when they're gonna do it? No, they strictly do the management of the money and, and, um, the contracts, and, and if they want to add on, that's what they do. They'll go out and submit bids, and they'll open the bids, and they, you know, you know, that's their end of it.
Right.
You know, their end of it isn't the actual use, daily use of it, that's done through their rec department.
So if you think, you think about what's been done here in the past, we've got to now, who, who knows is continuing, is that the, the town pays for the, um, bowling of the fields? Town pays for the water, and the maintenance of the, of the pump and the well. And then everything else is, if I'm right, is for all, fertilization, yeah, fertilization, and then everything else is all volunteer times, I mean, dancepens, it's the second home down there of, you know, creating the field for the softball, parents do the same with the baseball, so there's a ton of volunteer hours. I used to do it as well, there's a ton of volunteer hours that go into maintaining the fields, usually, you know, leagues buy the equipment needed for the, you know, bases for the equipment, sometimes we, we need to get some help on getting the fences fixed if they get damaged, you know, through roughhousing from non-play town or whatever, whatever it comes from, but, um, so that, I, you know, I think what we looked at before, when we talked about before was um, using another town to give us an idea, they used, gave us a price tag of forty-five grand, they estimated the cost would be to maintain fields of that size ongoing, so, I mean, putting as line item on the budget is certainly, you know, something that could be proposed. Um, we've got, Denise, you said there's a hundred and ninety-five thousand and change in that, what'd you call it, the town development fund?
Yeah, it's a town development, yeah, one hundred and ninety-five, um, yeah, so the, there was never a formal pines account created, it was, um, on our books, it's called town development, um, and that money from selling the sand was put into that town development. So that's why I've said all along, we don't even have the right type of account to do what we're doing, um, that I really think it needs to be more of a revolving fund, or it needs to be a, an item in the budget.
Or a combination.
Or a combination, yep. Um, and we do, you know, we do pay for some other stuff, I mean, I, I usually pay like Oasis to go out there and upkeep the baseball like once a year. Um, I know, I know others are doing that as well, but, so we do have, but I think that's part of the problem is I only pay for when I'm asked to pay for, so like, you know, Dan will send me an email and say, this is broken, or I'll give you a quote. Um, but there's nobody here that's actively going over there saying, well, this needs to be done, this needs to be done. I just rely on you guys, and I think it's only in a necessity that you come to me and say, we need this fixed, um, so.
So that's the other problem, we don't have a point person, or a town manager.
So that's where, that's where you'd fall into a.
Or recreation.
Commission.
Department, I mean.
A commission, you know.
But you said that they don't do that, they don't do the scheduling of the fields, who does, who does the scheduling of the fields there?
Their rec committee, not the commissions, commissioners, the committee.
So, so there's a rec committee?
There's a rec committee and.
And there's a rec commission.
Commissioners.
So every league here will submit a, a schedule for their uses, and then Denise will throw it all together and try and coordinate with everybody on their use cases, who's gonna be down there, what days, what hours, that kind of stuff.
So Denise manages all that?
Well, they kind of maintain it amongst themselves, the, the teams talk, and then I have a master schedule, so I have a Google calendar with every team and when they're playing, so that if someone calls and says, is the softball field available? is the softball field available, I can tell you, or if we're trying to plan a well, I know what everyone's schedule is.
Is that something that could be put online, that people could submit their request to you online, so that, cause right now, well, maybe
Yeah, but the board has to approve them, so Mike is the point person for the board to sign off on those.
Normally, I approve.
Oh, you approve them, okay.
Which hasn't been a problem, other than it's another job for you to do, manage.
Right.
Well, that's why I'm saying that. Because the other piece that we had talked about as a board is if there are entities that are using the fields that are not Groveland, making part of that fee-based, so, um, there are groups that benefit from the use of Groveland fields that are not, so, when you have a paint tucket group,
Right.
that group is comprised of people that don't necessarily live in Groveland, we're not talking huge fees, but, you know, whether there should be a nominal fee assessed to some groups that, you know, aren't entirely Groveland-based, what are your thoughts about that?
Maybe, how do you manage it, I think, so if you say, what's your softball, I don't, you put it on the spot, I don't know if you're But, um, so for our summer program, what's, what's the mixture of non-Groveland?
Mostly Groveland.
Yeah, it's almost all Groveland.
Uh, but almost all, so we probably have a few that aren't, right, so.
Could be wanting to, but, I mean, and it's not, it, no Groveland child's being left behind, it's because you build a softball.
Sure, absolutely, no, and that's always done in the past, so, um, so in that case
How do you, how do you feed that?
Right, exactly, what you do with those. I know, like, football has, and talk to Dave, kids from around, um, so in football, that's wider, you'd be in the same situation, though, what do you do? Charge non-Groveland kids a different fee? Could, I guess, but just be setting the rules up ahead of time to do that.
Right.
So, you, the kids knew, the parents knew, there was some different fees depending where you live.
I'd be interested to know if Gro, if Georgetown charges any fees, do we know that?
He made it sound like the sixty-five thousand took care of everything. I mean, that's what he made it sound like, I didn't ask him that question.
Right, but that's coming from the taxpayers of Georgetown to pay for that, whether or not someone from Danvers is coming to use the fields, they're still paying for it.
Right.
It's easier when it's a, a group that's not part of the town and wants to use the town facilities.
Right.
So, right now, we don't have any groups that are not Groveland-based?
We don't, cause we honestly don't have any availability.
Right.
The Groveland groups have all fields, so.
Can I ask a question? What, what would be the intent of the fee? Would it be to help towards the maintenance and
Yes.
And, okay, so, if no other Groveland, uh, no other groups other than Groveland teams came in, then you still need a plan for maintenance?
Yes.
Right, and I think, I think
Can you really count on?
No, we're not gonna count on, we're just trying to see if there was a way to generate more funds to put back into general fund to maintain the facility.
Right.
I just think the big, the biggest picture is that we need to get, if we're gonna do it, commissioners or someone, a body to start out the pyramid. You know what I'm trying to say? They would talk to the selectmen or whatever, and, you know, I mean, we're missing something.
You're talking about a more formal.
Right, we, we, you guys can't be expected to volunteer your time doing the daily, taking care of the fields and et cetera, et cetera, and then expect it to do this bigger job on top of it. We're missing a piece to the pyramid, the top of the pyramid's missing, that's what we need to get. And, and, and then, you guys could, would be talking to the top of the pyramid, saying, we need this or whatever, you know what I'm saying?
Sounds like a pyramid scheme, though, don't you think?
Well.
I got a bridge for you.
Yeah.
Bill, Bill, weren't you, uh, Bill, weren't you talking before about, uh, getting a point person to, uh, like, sell advertising at the fields down there to go into the maintenance?
Right. But again, again, that, to go back to what, like I just said, that, that would be, the commissioners, that would probably be their job to, to figure that out. You know what I mean, that would be their job to come up with a number.
I kinda wonder, we got some things going on here, we got the money set aside to, to build the fields, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, once that's done figuring out, or as it's being done figuring out, what has to happen?
But the commissioners, the commissioners may be involved in the, dealing with the money and dealing with getting, getting the project built. I mean, do you guys, as, as yard committee, wanna take care, take that on? Do you wanna take on?
We're committed to, to using the funds that we've got to, to get as far as we can down there.
Right. And I think that's gonna actually have to happen, because if we're gonna do commissioners, it, this could be another year down the road before we could even do it anyway.
Well, not to mention to come up with the sixty-five thousand to put in the line by.
Right, so you're, you're talking a year down the road, but I'm trying to, you know, obviously you are, yet, we're talking about two different things here, we're talking about short term, we're talking about long term.
So, I mean, so if you think about what has to happen with the two fields put on, right, so we've got two fields down in now that we already know what it costs to, to mow, maintain, we're gonna add another well, so you take the, whatever cost we pay now for the well and double that, right? So, then you get the two, coverage that, you've got, take the highway department, whatever they do now for mowing, double that, you're gonna have the football and the, or the baseball softball field to it. So, now, you kinda know roughly what it would cost to, to do it, or run it, I think.
What, was it fifty-eight thousand for the wells, or you, now you've been?
No, no, I'm, I'm sure.
No, 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 the maintenance, yeah.
Oh, the upkeep, upkeep.
You got more fertilizing, you got more linemen, you got more upkeep.
Yeah, I would say there are, right, there are the other costs that
There's a lot more involved, once you start adding the fees, for sure.
No, I, I'm not, I'm not denying that, Bill, what I'm saying is, we kinda, we kinda should be able to come up with a ballpark for what that would be.
Is it more than the sixty-five thousand that Georgetown?
No, it should be. I mean, the highway, you know, you can't really, yes, we could put them in the equation, but that's just out of their regular general fund budget anyways, so, um.
So, it's the well costs, maintenance.
Correct, the well, the fertilizing, the field, I think I pay, I wanna say it's forty-eight hundred dollars or something a year for the fertilization, um.
All right, so now you're looking at ten for that.
Right.
If we were to, and I don't wanna sound like a broken racket, but if we were to have the commissioners, that would be their job to figure that out. That, they'd sit down at a round table, and they'd say, okay, I need, we're gonna need X amount a year to run this project.
But, but I, I, I won't wanna get focused on getting what we've, we've got commitment on for the townspeople to build.
So, you wanna focus on getting the well done?
Right.
Getting that top field done, irrigated, ready to be used. And then, after that, we'll work on
But then you have, you have, at that point, when that's all said and done, you still gotta fertilize them, you still gotta blow off the sprinklers.
We still have the hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. If, if, that, that can last a year if that's all choose for is the pines.
How much you, of that money, do you think you use a year, the hundred and ninety-five, and right now?
I don't know, I'd have to go back and look and see what we're, I mean, we're not spending, you know.
Well, you don't fertilize every, well, you fertilize every year, right?
Yeah, like quarterly, they come out and do like a quarterly grub treatment, they do things all year long on those fields.
So, does the five grand cover everything down there?
Well, no, it covers the basic fertilization and seeding and maybe
I mean, as far as area down there, does it cover every?
No.
No, just the, just the softball and baseball fields.
So, you're gonna increase that.
So, that, once you have that new field, that's gonna add, no, two grand or something.
Right, so say, right, so, so say ten thousand, because we have to look at the utility fields as well.
So, I guess what we need to do, Mike, then, is we need to, we need to walk out of this meeting tonight, and you say to us, we're gonna take our, if that's okay with these other board members, we have a hundred and fifty-three, we're gonna take over, and we're gonna build the parks ourself. We're gonna, that's what we wanna do, and that we're gonna continue to want the money out of the maintenance money to take care of this project. We don't want it to get into the commissioners, that's our job, you guys deal with that, that's what I think we need to determine tonight, that, that's all we need to determine.
So, are you okay with saying, yeah, we'll take on at least a point and say, Denise, we need to do this with this money, we need to do that, this is what we wanna do, we're gonna, we're gonna budget for, whatever, it's fifteen grand every year for, um, mowing and fertilization and water and electricity, whatever the number is, and then, kinda manage that, so we know who's
I want, I want the committee to decide that as a committee?
Yeah.
On, on me saying?
Right.
So, I'm willing to have a discussion at our next meeting, absolutely.
And I think that's kinda phase two, I think phase one is really, what are we doing with the two hundred and twelve thousand that town meeting voted, what's left?
Mm-hmm.
Minus the three items that we already have in progress. You know, what the next step is, whether it's the new now upper field, the utility field,
Right.
um, you know, what's needed to get those up and operational, would sort of be your piece of this, correct?
Right.
So, figuring out how much loom and how level it needs to be, and I guess which one's the priority, and then what we need to spec to actually get fields built.
It, it almost sounds like, uh, what we should be doing is, and maybe the committee could come up with it, uh, with, with the assistance of, of the finance director, what the maintenance costs are per year, and we need a, a line item for our budget.
I don't disagree, and that is, I think first, I wanna, I wanna get what's been committed to completed. Then that, to me, that's another issue that has to be dealt with, but we already, the people in Groveland said they wanted, they put the money aside for CPA funds to build the fields. So, wanna get that done?
No, well, well, that's, that's, but as this money gets used up, that's in that, uh, two hundred thousand, whatever, uh, it's gonna leave less and less, uh, for, to generate, uh, every year for, for maintenance.
I don't disagree with that.
And, and easily, that two hundred thousand could be used to, uh, to do those fields over without a problem, and bring it right up to snuff. But we, we're gonna need some, some kind of financing in place, and I, I think that's, that's the way to go, is a, a line item in a budget, uh, for the maintenance of the, the pines.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree that it should be something that should be addressed, yes, because you don't wanna build it, and it doesn't fall apart.
And it will.
I think what I'm hearing you say is that your focus right now is moving forward the piece that, that the town has voted on, and how do you continue to move that process forward? Because right now, what, what do you think is a reasonable timeline, assuming that the
Well, once you know the well is
Well, it depends on the well.
Produced, then we can get quotes on the irrigation work, and knowing what we can cover with that.
But do you have a goal in terms of when you hope that?
As I've talked to Denise and Bill on, I've had problems with contractors following up. And they break the show, but then they kinda disappear, and I didn't know if it was, we had a problem paying our bills or what, because they were just kinda, just turned into woodwork. Um, but, you know, so I, I can't speak to how quickly we can get contractors to do the work, but certainly, that's, that would be the goal, is to, to move as soon as possible.
What, what the contractors are gonna want, is the contractors are gonna want a spec that they can actually bid off of. They're gonna want, this field needs this, 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 and this, all the way down the line, they need that to bid off of it. And, and, and for you to have a contractor go down there and say, I wanna build this field, it's broad, he's gonna walk away, cause he needs to have a spec to bid off of.
We, we have the specs, we've had them for five years.
Do you put that in the, the bidding process?
But you're gonna have to put a bid package together, the bid.
Yeah.
Mike and I would work out on that, and it's, it's in there, now, if you change your field, you just take that field dimension and put it up on the top.
And they're still not getting back to you when you have that kinda clarification in the bid?
No, I think we have trouble in general, um, and we don't, we pay our bills quite quickly, um, yeah, but we had, we had trouble with Bagnell. I mean, we, the only irrigation company came up from Connecticut and gave us a ridiculous price, though we bought the materials ourselves and hired someone to install it. Because, at the end of the day, that's what we can do, you know, in the
Can we do that same process with them?
We, we certainly can, as long as we have everything specked out accordingly, but I think in the grand scheme of things, we're a small piece of the pie. You know, people wanna go and do these
They wanna do big projects.
You know, huge projects, when it comes to us.
It's like when you put a small addition on your house.
Right, we have like an eleven thousand dollar irrigation system, that's not appetizing.
And then also, these projects are, these projects are prevailing wage, that narrows the window down to certain companies that only do prevailing wage jobs. So, that puts another, you know, cuts it into a, a small contract, it can no longer do it if he is not capable of paying prevailing wage, you know what I'm trying to say? But, I think, like I said a minute ago, and maybe I'm wrong, I think we gotta get a commitment, and you need a commitment from us at the end of the night, is you have a hundred and fifty-three, say, you guys are gonna go and, and take that, that piece of it on, we need to separate, not that I'm saying it's anything bad, we need to let you do your thing, or we gotta do our thing, either one, and I think what's happening right now is we're all trying to get the same goal, but we're not getting there, you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, and like I said, we're
So, at, at this point, while the well, while the well's being drilled, and we know it's gonna show up and what have you, if you guys know you wanna do the utility field, then start putting the specs together and drawing up all your paperwork and getting together how much loom you need, et cetera, et cetera, that's in place, ready to go. We don't know how many sprinkleheads we need, because area-wise, we do, but breaking up into zones, we don't, because we don't know what the model's gonna build. But we, but, you know, I could take this plan right here and tell you how many heads you're gonna need, but I can't tell you how many zones until I know the pressure.
So, what do you need from us tonight? Anything?
Uh, just, are you okay with it, continue forward?
I'm okay with it, I don't think anyone's disagreeing with you, uh, I don't know that we need to actually vote on it, but I think, just, I mean, wherever it takes to move forward, and, you know, just run the numbers by Denise, I guess, as you have been doing, but, I mean, I know you guys work hard on stuff down there, Dan, you're down there all the time, I think you sleep next to that ice cream machine. Yeah, I think there's a cot next to that ice cream machine down there. But, I mean, yeah, just, I, I'm all for getting that stuff done, I mean, I know my kid likes to play down there too, even on offseason when he's not playing the sport, so, um.
So, not to interrupt you, but that being said, you guys can get, get back to the board hopefully and let us know, do we look down the road for the next budget season in having a, um, rec commissioners to go, that second piece, you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I think you wanna keep that in the back of your mind, as, you know, how we're gonna proceed with this going forward.
Cause it sounds like you guys aren't willing, not, not, you're not willing, you, it's not your forte to go raise money and, and what have you.
Well, we, we used to, we used to get two hundred and fifty dollars a sign and put them on the fence.
Yeah.
If you ever been to Washington Park, hold fence, all, all fields are lined, you know, but we were told, hold off on that for now. Talking to John Stock of Babe Ruth, he wants to do that, and he's got plenty of companies that'll put them on the baseball field, we can do it on the softball field. Eventually, we're gonna have the snack shack and make money out of that, and give some high school kids some work, um, but right now, we don't have any of that. And with construction going on, when that's done, I think that's the game line.
Right, and even if you wanted to have someone sponsor the field or something down there, I mean, I'm all for that too, if you guys
And that money goes to the fund that, that's to take care of the field.
Right.
Right, so that would be a different, so then that, the board needs to establish a revolving fund through town meetings, so that when money starts coming in, it's only expended on the fields to maintain them.
Right, so, at some point, January, February, you know, after we get through this, this first phase, we can start looking at a revolving fund for that scenario, as you guys start to build out your kinda revenue generating machine down there.
Yep, I, I already have ten companies, twenty-five hundred dollars for the signs, so.
Okay.
And what do you need to put them up? What do you need to?
Well, we gotta, the, the problem is, what's happened is they've been faded by the sun and ruined, so the companies that have them, Bradwell, Northfield Insurance, East Association, they all, we all need new signs.
Yeah.
So, unfortunately, it's probably a hundred dollars a sign, so that number's gonna be cut in half, until we get the new sign, and really save more money.
I just paid the bill, I know, it's gonna be more money, but they're nice.
Yeah, well, it's, it's beautiful down there.
But I don't But I don't, I can't believe, I know if I want, I've been dying to get a sign down there, I'd pay half the cost to get a sign up there.
Who told you you couldn't do it?
Well, it was just on hold until we got all this taken care of, um.
Can we take it off hold? Let, let us see. I don't know, who put it on hold?
Well, the problem is, we have no place, if we take the money now, it's just general fund.
So, what, what does it take to create that revolving?
A town meeting.
Town meeting.
Okay.
So, you can certainly do it and put it in the general fund, and it'll fall to free cash, and you can appropriate it out.
And can we put it on the warrant for the fall?
If you're okay with that, we'll, we'll happy to do that, and then reappoint it next season.
If we have a fall town meeting, yes.
I think that's a great idea, gives us some time to get the advertising going.
Yeah, then I, who?
I don't know what the plan is for the, for the snack shack, I don't think.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, I know that's down the road, but how was this put on hold? Do you remember? I don't, I never heard it being put on hold.
Well, they, they just said, hold off on that till we find out.
Well, you have a fence down there, right? You have fences, so you have plenty of space to put signs up, so if you got companies that wanna advertise down there, let's
Well, that money used to go to the rec bottom line, to, to our expenses, so.
Yeah.
I think the concern was the mechanism.
Yeah.
So, that was the on hold portion.
But now, we're gonna
But I think Denise is saying that as a temporary, we could do it to the general fund.
As a stopgap between now and
Right, and you would use it as, right, just increase revenue to appropriate, or it would just fall to free cash, you would appropriate it.
Right, right, and make sure we appropriate it back to yours, your facilities, but then, next town meeting, we can
Create its own account.
Create a revolving account, right.
That really earmarks those funds to the pines, the upkeep, the maintenance,
Right.
the rehabilitation, whatever.
And Shay, who's part of the, our committee is, is a way, he's on the football and helps with lacrosse, there, there's more than a business owners that will put up signs there.
He's spoken to me many times about the same situation.
Yes, I don't think that needs to be put on hold any further, if you, if you guys wanna move forward with that, then let's move forward and see what we can get done. Okay, so, go ahead, do you have any?
I, I wonder if there's any opportunity to, um, I know they have the electronic school board on the big field.
Yeah.
Is there any opportunity to maybe, um, get money from, say, you know, TD Bank or Aggregate Industries that, or, um, chest it into
Trinity.
Name that, uh, you know, or
I thought Trinity was who paid for it to begin with.
It's something that's Does
Oh, maybe, yeah.
He's talking about on the other fields.
On the other field, on the other fields.
In the other fields.
On the new field, yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, Trinity paid for the first one.
Just gonna find out what Shay wants to do for a sign.
I'm talking about school boards and things like that, for your, for the softball fields.
We already have that one.
You have an electronic school board there too?
And baseball one, they don't work, cause the clickers are broken, I gotta get a new one, but.
Good opportunity to knock on the door.
Yeah, I understand.
All right, so, you're all set? Dan, you're all set with the funds and everything?
So, so then, you guys leaving tonight, we are good with getting the one fifty-three going, move that money?
Yeah, it's, it's two, don't wait, it goes.
Whatever.
Well, I've said one fifty-three after the lower.
Right, whatever the money is, whatever the dollar amount is, you're gonna deal with that, you're gonna move forward with that and you're gonna put your signs back up and what have you, get some money generated there. So, as far as down the road in the future, you don't, you, you guys don't seem like you need commissioners, you think you're good without it?
I think it's a line item, um, and there's actual funding for the town, we can manage it. It was the idea of, so where left is where left of the money, where left it, not only be funding it, but also appropriating it for instance.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Right.
It was just, it was a lot for a committee to go on.
So, so that being said, do we find out what it's gonna actually cost, work on getting a number, what it's gonna cost and see if the signs can cover that cost for now?
Yep.
And as it grows, then we may have to go to a line item for the town budget and then have the town kicking money back then?
And we still have the one ninety-five to, to continue to, to pull from, to interim, until we figure out exactly how much this is gonna cost
Yeah, I think that's- Yeah.
And what the funds are actually gonna need.
Yeah, those are all long term.
And, and we do still have to figure out your funding because if you're just gonna stay on as a town committee, you can't have a separate bank account and collect money separate from the town.
And we're perfectly willing to go to revolving.
Yeah, so we need to do all that to make that-
Right.
A formal, so it's part of the revolving account, it would go in the same account because then it's all maintaining the field, the programs, et cetera.
But again, that's probably-
But I thought that you said we could create a revolving account specifically for the pines.
Town meetings.
It would actually have to be two revolving accounts, right?
Um, well, because one is just designated for the pines, it wouldn't be designated to pay for softball and basketball and robling day and whatever else we have. Okay, yeah, or we just create a recreation revolving account and anything that falls under the umbrella of recreation would go in there.
Okay.
We could create line items under the same revolving account.
Again, I think that's down the road.
Right, but it's something that we need to, before they're handling other money, because then they're handling money from two different-
So, we're good.
Can I ask? So, in terms of procedurally, what would help your committee best in terms of communication? Do we want to set some kind of procedures in place where you'll report back to us? Is that gonna happen in writing? How do you propose the communication piece happen so to alleviate any of the kind of issues that may have happened previously?
Yep, I'd say, well, clearly, I'll, I'll work with Denise on, on, you know, funding and bidding. But as far as updates and where we stand or problems we're running into or whatever, I'm happy to come for a short discussion to talk to the committee or Mike.
Or you can reach out to Mike, right?
You can reach out to me. I mean, if you want to be on the agenda, we can see what the next agenda, whether subsequent agenda has openings. Or if, you know, if you just want to say, hey, Mike, here's an update, you know, put it towards the board so they have an idea of what's going on, that's easy too. I mean, I don't want to make you come in just to come in. If it's something short, you want to put in an email, just, that's easy.
One, one thing going forward would be that you are the procurement officer, so you'd handle the bidding, but you're gonna probably want these guys to make up the, um, the bid documents.
Right, just like we have been, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
They provide all the specs, I put all the leak requirements, I advertise it.
Okay.
And I, I think it was beneficial that you come in, I appreciate you, uh, coming in with the presentation. You answered a lot of our questions. Hopefully, uh, you, you got some of, uh, questions from us, answers from us that I, hopefully, uh, I, I'm really impressed with the, with the, uh, I, I feel comfortable with, with you guys handling it down there.
Great.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for coming in. Reach out to me anytime. I'll always answer email.
All right, great.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the May Volunteer of the Month. So, we have several nominations for Volunteer of the Month for May twenty seventeen. Kathy Prunier, Shay Condon, and Lisa Soep. Uh, anybody want to make a motion to nominate a volunteer?
I would make a motion to nominate Kathy Prunier.
Can I get a second?
Uh, I'll, I'll second that nomination.
Any discussion?
Uh, I'd like to nominate Lisa Soep.
I'll second that.
So, wait, wait a second, we have-
I think we had a vote in the first one.
Yeah, so we have a nomi, we have a nomination and a motion and a second, so.
Do you want to have a discussion first?
Well, that's what I, any discussion, Bill? One you have? Well, we can just move to vote.
Yeah, we can do that.
Move to vote, Bill, any discussion?
Move to vote.
Ed, any further discussion?
Uh, no, I'm just looking over the, uh, we, we have a motion on the floor for Kathy Prunier. She volunteered her time to, to cover early voting in the, in the two thousand sixteen presidential election, assisted the town clerk, saved the town thousands of dollars. Uh, I, I, I thought, I certainly think that that's worth some recognition.
I would like to add to that, that my experience with Kathy was when I was the chair of the Library Trustees. Kathy was on that and she's been part of the Library Trustees for twenty-five years. She also participates on the, um, Housing Authority and I believe she's on the CPA? CPC, excuse me. So, my understanding is she's on three different committees. Uh, when we used to do various fundraising activities at the library, she was the person who spearheaded. And, and quite frankly, it's always amazed me how hard she works because she has some kind of physical challenges. But she was always there to go the extra mile whenever it was needed, so that, that forms the basis of my recommendation.
All right, so let's take a vote, all those in favor?
Sure, yes.
All those opposed? So, that does not carry. Anybody else want to make a motion?
I'd like to nominate Lisa Soep.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Can we get any further discussion?
I would like to hear the basis for the nomination.
Sure, Bill?
Yes, uh, Lisa's done tremendous work, uh, taking over as point person for the Washington Park Project. That was granted when Ms. Pinkham resigned as president of the GBL. And anybody that goes by that park can, uh, take a great pride in, in what's been done there over the last year. She also coordinates all the snack shack, all the, uh, field crew. She's down at that park, uh, almost twenty-four seven, making sure the contractors, uh, have what they need to take care of the fields. Working with, uh, rental agencies, uh, like the affordable parties. She's down there, she just about, uh, she's, uh, the Washington Park equivalent to Dan Stewart, I guess. She basically lives down there and, uh, done a tremendous job and, um, really is a benefit to, uh, a number of, um, the folks in this town through her activities with the youth groups.
And how long has she been in that role?
She's been in there two years, she also serves as secretary for the GBL, which is, uh, quite a job.
Bill, any further discussion?
No, I, um, think that she did one, uh, one hell of a job redoing the park and she took care of the contractors and what have you, like Bill said. And she saved the, the town thousands of dollars in that project and, and spearheading it and what have you. So, um, I, I think that that's where I want to vote and that's where I'm gonna vote, I don't feel bad voting there.
Lisa?
That's it.
Ed?
Uh, no, there's nothing, uh, taking nothing away from her because she does do a great job over there, but, uh, I, I, I think there should have been some, some supporting comments in the, uh, application and, and, and there wasn't, so for us to, for us to look it over. Please provide name and why you're nominating the person, that was the only one of the three that was submitted without any supporting documents. Not, not taking anything away from what she's, she's done because she does do a great job, but, uh, I, I, I think there should have been something for us to look at.
I actually did try and when I got to the monkey, survey monkey. I, I couldn't, I couldn't navigate to where you, you put it in, it just kept taking me back in circles and circles.
Like a monkey chasing tail?
Just hit next.
But it came, it came back to a monkey survey, a survey monkey, or, or whatever that site is.
Survey Monkey is the site that we're collecting these nominations from.
Yeah, and I got right through to most of it, but then when I tried to put in more information, I just, I, I couldn't navigate to the right spot.
All right.
I'll go back to say one more thing.
Sure.
And this is where, this is where you have three people and you have to narrow it down to one, but I'll tell you, this, I've never felt comfortable doing this because as Ed and Lisa have said, Kathy is a, a volunteer in the town, she has put a lot of time and what have you. But how do you narrow something down? It's, it's a tough thing, you know, it's almost like-
They're all great nominees.
They're all good people and they all work hard and what have you, that's why I don't like having to narrow it down to one.
We've had the same problem when, uh, Mr. Dempsey was nominated the same month as Mr. Reed, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I mean, even Mr. Dempsey shook his head and said, I think, yeah, Mr. Reed should have it. It was a tough choice because I know how much you've also done for the town, uh, and it was a shame you had to lose, um.
No, to lose, they say not be chosen.
Right, right.
Not lose, right, not be chosen.
I'm hoping someone, I'm hoping someone nominates you again so that we have the opportunity to make it, uh, you know, to present you with one of the sports. Again?
If you don't get it this month, you can get it next month.
All right, so we have a, we have a motion and a second and discussion, so all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All right, moving on to votes of the board, we have minutes from May second, twenty seventeen. Anybody have any comments on those? Everybody look them over?
Well, they were read, I read those, they looked to be in order, I moved for passage.
Get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Accept the resignation of Patrick Jensen as a temporary seasonal cemetery groundskeeper effective May seventeenth, twenty seventeen. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Patrick Jensen.
I'll, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All of them in favor?
Yes.
On to old business, Ed, anything for old business?
Uh, yes. Just, uh, expanding on what, what Lisa had mentioned about department reports and updates. Uh, about a month ago, time goes by fast, maybe a little longer than that now. I'd asked for a, a, a list of equipment, uh, that the different departments have with the, the age, the mileage, and the condition. We got, like, we got two. We got one from the police department, which was, was an excellent report, one that was, uh, from the fire department, could have been, used some more clarity, but, uh, as yet, haven't been supplied with any, any other department's, uh, list of equipment, their age, and mileage condition.
I have the highway department I can copy for you, um, I did not receive anything back from the cemetery.
And, uh, anything from the water?
No, I'll follow back up with both of them. I can copy the highway for you.
Anything else, Ed?
Uh, that's it.
Lisa?
Nothing, thank you.
Yes, I'd like to add to, um, Slickman Watson's request, um, to, um, go beyond just the vehicles and equipment, but how about the infrastructure? Uh, computer systems, communication systems, any IT issues, uh, I want, are there any, is there any aging equipment that's in danger of having a catastrophic failure and in the future that we need to look at now to be replaced in the next year or two?
Our entire infrastructure, our servers are old, our entire infrastructure's old.
Um, then, uh, we should start making a plan today to update that equipment as soon as possible or else we could find ourselves between a rock and a hard place and-
Oh, I agree, so, um, with the other departments, it's a little more difficult. A lot of them have, um, either have had consultants come in in the past and have done the work for them. Um, here, our server is, um, we've been having some issues, um, it's been affecting our financial software. So, I have been working with our vendor, um, to see if we can go cloud based. The problem is we're not budgeted, it's not a huge expense, I think they charge nine hundred dollars per user a year. But we only, we have a very limited technology budget, so, um, I'm trying to be creative with some of the things that we can, with what we can do with the budget that we have. But I just actually today got an update from our spam filter that as a result of all these viruses, they now are adding an advanced threat protection, which is doubling our cost of the spam filters and our, uh, you know, again, we just don't have that. So, like, so I'm trying to be creative, but I already know we're gonna exceed next year's budget. So, by taking our financial software off of the server and putting it on the cloud based, the only thing our server is gonna be used for is file storage. So, it'll last much longer with that. Like I said, we're having these hiccups with the financial software, so if I can remove that piece, the server will last longer. The police are, you know, they actually had, had an issue today with one of their dispatch computers that I think we've worked out. The fire, their main concerns over there are internet access, um, they have, because they run their cable, um, from the police station down into the fire station, um, they have spotty service. So, we actually talked to Comcast today and got them a dedicated line for the central fire station, South already has that. So, it's all pretty fluid, it's just a matter of funds. So, as part of my plan next year, um, I've been working on an overall capital for infrastructure updates. Not as much technology, more building wise, we have a lot of, again, older infrastructure in place that we need a plan to start addressing that. I did a technology capital article when I first came here three years ago, um, and that's gotten us some good equipment. We got a new phone system, we updated the firewall, um, but again, I think that was like twelve thousand dollars, it only goes so far.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I am working on things like that.
And it only lasts so long.
It only lasts so long, so I am working, I think the cloud system, um, is gonna be beneficial for us, we only have a handful of users. They will take care of backing it up, um, and verifying the data integrity, that we don't have to do that here. So, again, that's another piece that can come off because I pay for, we back up to the cloud, I pay for backup, um, storage. So, it, it is all being worked on.
So, the cloud piece is going to happen?
I'm fairly certain it's gonna happen, um-
I think it's pretty important.
Who's the provider?
It's our financial software, Vadar, so it's a proprietary software. They're actually out of Massachusetts, they're in, um, I think AIR is their company. It's going to happen, but my problem is, is I was trying to, since I've been here, I've been trying to get the financial software to more people so that, you know, people should have the ability to look up their accounts and things like that, that will limit that ability.
When you say people, you mean community?
Other departments, no, 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 departments, because right now, only myself, the two in my collector's office, the town accountant and the assessor have access to our financial software, nobody else. Um, but I've tried, like the Council on Aging would like to be able to look at their accounts, you know, the departments, the water department wants to be able to look at the accounts, um-
And you can give those departments limited access?
We can't, because once we go to the cloud, it's per ye, login, it's nine hundred dollars per login.
So, you have one main person on each department basically logging in?
I suppose, but then we have to change the permissions, you know, then.
Right.
So, we can't have permissions for just the water to, so, it's a work in progress, Lisa, but that's my goal, is that's where I'm heading to.
Yeah, I mean, I think in terms of priorities, that would seem pretty high.
I agree, and every time we have sort of a blip with the server-
It pushes it closer.
No, 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 it actually, I don't know if you remember when, um, we had an issue when I sent out excise demands, that people were getting demands that hadn't, had actually paid. When we have these blips, it's just deleting receipts from the system. So, they can go in and find them and recover them, but for some reason, it's dropping the network when the data hasn't fully updated and it's falling right out of our system.
Nice.
So.
And that is not the responsibility of the company that provides the software, that's not a glitch on their part?
They're saying it's our network and it's our server, which I would disagree with because five or six years old, it's, it's server two thousand eight.
Really?
So, I would disagree that it's our network, um, because one of the things that I do, um, and I've always done as I've been IT, is I stream radio internet because I can hear when it drops, and our signal never drops, but they've gone in and said, it's our actual server that's running, so it's an access database program. And they said, it's the server that's causing these hiccups.
And that wouldn't happen if that was coming from the cloud?
No, because our, like I said, we never drop the internet, knock on wood, because I don't want to have that happen, but-
And the, the companies, um, and we're getting kind of deep here, but the company's in AIR and that's where their server farm is?
Yes.
And I'm assuming that that's all, um, firewalled off from everybody else and disaster recovery and all that stuff?
Yeah, yeah. And that's, and that's the good thing, I mean, I, you know, we do back it up, we back it up, I have a backup in-house and we back up to the cloud here. But I don't check it every single day to make sure it's backing up, I get emails and I kind of scroll through to make sure the backup was successful, but if something happens, then it's on them, then they have disaster recovery, they get us back up and running. If I come in in the morning, which has happened on occasion, the server's down, you know, thankfully, I get it early, I can get everything back up before people come in and business starts, but, um, that's one less thing we would have to worry about, that would all be on them. So, that is my plan, um, like I said, I've got the pricing now, we've got some other things in place. I know it's gonna blow our budget next year, that and the added advanced threat protection with the spam filters, but it's necessary. I mean, we have historically paid very little into technology and I think we need to start budgeting for what's needed here.
And I don't know if there's any, uh, so I see the Comcast is the next, now, do we get, it looks like we're renegotiating something with them? And don't they provide sometimes funds to the town for things of this nature or they can?
So, they provide, so Comcast pays, um, on every cable bill or franchise fee, that comes to the town by way of, um, quarterly payments.
Okay.
That has gone into account that the cable committee has designated. Now, I will say, in the past, I know those funds were used for technology and not cable related, uh, but that's on them to approve. In the Comcast, so Comcast provides as part of our cable contract, we have, they cover the cable service, but not internet service. Costs us a hundred dollars a building for internet service a month under Comcast.
Is there any ability to-
One, two, three, four.
Totally under the purview of the cable committee, is there any ability to negotiate, negotiate that in a way that also benefits the town and not just? I don't know the answer.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, if there was a specific need that we could go to the cable committee and say, you know, we need this and if they approve, like I said, they have in the past, they have approved, I'm assuming they approved the use of spending that funds. Actually, the entire town hall got new computers and I was told it came from the cable funds at one point. I don't take that money out, we use it to pay the, um, you know, the equipment and things like that.
So, if that's-
I personally think that should be used to cover the cable access in the building, the internet access in the buildings, but we don't use it for that, we use our utility line.
And do we know, like, what kind of balance they maintain from the fees that they get?
Who?
The cable com, the cable?
Committee. Who is the cable committee?
It's on it. Tracy's the chair.
Come on.
I actually only think when a request is put before them usually by Chris is when they act on it. And it most, most of it is the, the new microphones, equipment in this room.
Do you know if they have a lot of money?
They do have money set aside for legal.
Okay, so I would respectfully request that we consider, as we move forward in looking at that kind of infrastructure, that we maybe talk to them about whether there's any mechanism for them to assist with that. Because Ed seems to think they have a healthy account.
That there is a healthy account. It's a very, because it's not spent money.
I, I know I had suggested in the past, maybe we could use that to the electronic voting at the town meeting.
Yep.
And, uh, I don't think that got too far.
Well, there's, for another agenda item, North Andover just came out. They're, they had this student doing a whole statistics thing and they determined that, I believe it wasn't worthwhile to do the electronic voting for, for some reason or other. It didn't end up being more economical.
That's another topic.
I don't think we were looking at it on, uh,
I know what you're talking about, yeah.
I think we were looking at it as, uh, uh, about a privacy.
Yeah.
It, it, that, uh, some of the people might feel intimidated that they're-
Yeah, I understand.
If you're sitting next to a person, uh, hey, uh, you're, you're voting for this, right? And, uh, some people just don't wanna vote no. And, uh, I think the intimidation factor was part of it, the privacy factor was part of it. And, uh, I, I think if my recollection, it was Newbury, uh, did it and they were successful with it.
Newbury just did it, yep.
And it may, uh, maybe we could relook at that.
Yeah, I'm open to that idea.
Alright, that's-
Yeah, so if you, just on that, if you recall, we need, um, a bylaw in place. It's, if, if we do it just experimentally, once, we don't need it, but if we're gonna do something long-term, we need to have a bylaw in place.
Alright, that's another topic.
But yeah, so back to Bill. Um, the technology is something I actually look at quite often just because as things are changing and, you know, threats happen or I come in and there's, you know, our phone system was down for like off and on three days last week. Um, as a result of the patch from Microsoft to protect us against the WannaCry virus, it actually shut our server down because it wouldn't update. So the phone text had to come out. It was, I mean, it was three days of up and down phone system, but that's all taken care of. So, yes, we have to-
Denise, do you think that there are grant monies available for, and not that you would apply for them, but let's say we had a grant writer. Do you think that there are grant monies available for some of these items?
So there are, and actually I was planning to apply, but we just got money in this fiscal year, fiscal seventeen, um, through the state ITT grant for the building software, the building permitting software, and you cannot apply two years in a row. So next year, I'm hoping that if they continue with this grant, um, that's one of the reasons why I had the board, um, sign off on the municipal community compact, because now that we have this, it's sort of a guarantee with the state that we'll try and improve in certain areas. We go to the front of the line on grant applications. Um, and this one is specific only to compact communities, but we couldn't get it a second year.
Okay.
Is there anything we can get, maybe through home security, for cyber security?
That I don't know. I can look more and see what else is available, but I just know the state puts out their technology grants and that's-
I hate to have that be something that we ask you to do in addition to all the other stuff. I mean, maybe at some point we can explore that whole other piece.
Bill, anything else?
Uh, old business, um, I missed a part of the meeting. I apologize. It was a baseball game. There were so many that, uh, had to make that one. We lost six-five. It was a great game. Going back, uh, old business, I, I, I guess the, uh, work down at, uh, Gardner Street, uh, would be old business, right? How's that project going and is it going to be the next governor's road? Because that is a mess right now. I don't wanna see that road. I mean, we already, we already have one like that in town.
So I got an update today from the engineer that's working with the water department, just on their funding schedule. They are expecting, they are ahead of schedule, um, and I know as far as funding and paying on it, they are expecting it to be completed by July. So I'm assuming the work, that I don't know because there's a philosophical difference on the paving.
Really?
Um, well, Bob usually likes to let the trenches set for a year before it's fully repaved. But the water department didn't wanna do that, so I honestly don't know where it ends up. But that's, I know that that discussion was taking place, because if you pave the trench too soon, it might settle and then you have a hole in the road, a divot in the road.
But they're bonded, so they, if something happened, they, they should leave a bond up, alright?
Yes, but then they may use the town's paving contract because it's at a lower price, so that all sort of coming into play.
Well, whatever, whatever, that helps the town people, whatever.
You can't put another layer on that, that strip first?
I don't.
And then pave the whole thing?
I, I don't know anything about asphalt. I just know what I've been told about the setting of the trench.
I don't know anything about paint.
The road's a mess.
Yeah.
The road's a mess. That road needs to be repaired ASAP. It's a mess. I mean, there's just too many people here who need to fight. I mean, not the governor's road. I know governor's road is, is, is terrible. I understand that, but this road is getting there fast.
Yeah, well, we'll get some information on that.
I know July. I'm assuming that included the paving because it was the total contract amount and that's included as an alternate. Um, I can follow up and ask. I, I just know, like I said, for spending purposes today, I got the timeline.
Appreciate it.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Bill?
No, I'm good.
I'm good, okay. Uh, correspondence, minutes from May fifteenth, twenty-seventeen. Uh, we have Comcast license expiration notice from the Mass Department of Telecommunications and Cable. And then Finance Director's time.
I just have two quick items. Um, at the last meeting, I gave you all the town planner job description as correspondence. I didn't know if anyone had any questions on it before I put it out to advertise.
I did not.
No, it looked fine as I recall.
And then my second item is just to let you know that, um, this Thursday, we are on target to launch a new website. So I've redesigned our website with Virtual Town Hall, which is our provider. It'll actually, it's more feasible for mobile devices, so right now if you're on a cellphone, it'll actually shrink instead of losing the part of the screen. Um, and it actually will have a component that, um, will help the town clerk comply with the, um, required open meeting law changes that happened this past January. For tracking and recording purposes, all that stuff, any request has to be logged and tracked and cataloged. So this will eventually have a piece that will do that. And it will just have some additional functionality. It looks a little prettier. It's a little easier for us to update. So that's supposed to be launching on Thursday. We've been actively getting it up and running.
Is that gonna sit on the old server?
No, that's housed at Virtual Town Hall. We don't have that in-house. So hopefully it'll be good to go. Uh, we had some training on it on Friday. I've been updating it today, um, so expect to see a new website, so hopefully on Thursday. And that's all I have for this time around.
Okay. Uh, selectmen time. Ed, you have anything for selectmen's time?
Yeah, just, uh, a couple of things. Uh, just prior to the meeting, we were handed, I think a couple of, uh, things are gonna be presented over the library. Uh, one on June fifth, uh, Chris Schledler, uh, Representative Project Coyote. He's gonna do a, a lecture on human, uh, based on coyotes. Human coyote encounters are increasing. Wild. Uh, Kennedy College's Chris, uh, Schledler will discuss the, the rapid evolution of the small western coyote into the large, more wolf-like coyote in our midst. Learn about the mis- this misunderstood predator, including how to peacefully coexist with both urban and rural environments. That'll be Monday, June fifth at six-thirty. We also received one conjunction with the library and the Grover Police Department. A, a bike rodeo on Saturday, June third from ten to, uh, noon time. At the municipal parking lot, one eighty-one, one eighty-five Main Street. Open to the public, free and open to the public. Both, both, both. Thank you.
Lisa?
Nothing, thank you.
Bill? Could you, we were talking about the land sales of, like you were in here and I wasn't able to actually convey to the board on that Dana Drive parcel that was foreclosed on. Could you bring us up to date on that, that piece of land?
Yes, so eight Dana Drive, maybe?
The top, yeah.
Um, the vacant lot that has wood piled on it?
Yes.
Yes, so the town never legally foreclosed on that. So when it was believed to have been foreclosed on, it was put into a tax exempt status and, under the purview of the town. Um, I came in, um, and I guess at that time bids were put out and, and a bid, a bid was awarded. Thankfully, no money actually exchanged. But I had to contact the attorney that was dealing with the foreclosure, who in turn told me that it was never legally foreclosed upon by the town. So we put it back on our tax rolls, is back into tax title, um, and that's pretty much where that one sits.
So we don't have ownership of it somewhere?
So we don't have ownership, so the neighbors have complained since I've been here about, um, the neighbor that does stack wood on it. Uh, the building inspector has gone out. He actually doesn't violate any building codes. Technically, it could be considered a, like nuisance under our bylaw because of the height of the wood. But it's not our land. It's private property, so we can't enforce anything unless it really violates the bylaw. And like I said, it was really a stretch to kinda consider it a nuisance under the bylaw. I do have it on a list. Um, I've been actually going through now that we just put the two thousand sixteen's into tax title. At some point in the near future, we should talk about whether or not we wanna engage in foreclosure. There's actually several properties in town that have been a tax title for many, many years that, um, as much as I don't wanna see that happen to a family in town, I, I think it's necessary to start, um, on some of those properties. So this one would be-
Well, that was particularly vacant anyway, correct?
Correct, correct. Um, and there are some that are like unknown owners that have been in our books that we should just go through that process with. But yeah, so right now we do not own it. We don't have any rights to it. It is owned by the Dana Drive Realty Trust is who the assessed owner is. So I have informed the neighbors of that, that unfortunately it's not our land. We're not giving him any special treatment. It's just we have no rights to enforce on someone else's property for that matter. Just to touch base, Bill, on, because you brought it up, um, a purchase and sale. Town council drafted up a purchase and sale for the five lots that, um, we did tentatively, um, enter into agreement with. That has been sent off to the DeHulu's to review. The other RFP for, um, the other two lots that you guys met on last week, um, I'm just about finished with that RFP, so I don't think I'll make the cutoff. Um, I think the cutoff is noon time tomorrow to get in the next central register, which is June ninth. I probably won't make that deadline, so it'll be in the following central register. I have actually received, um, more calls on that, um, just today, so people are anxious for that land. I don't know what, you know, what we'll get when we put it out to the market, but people are anxious to see that go up to sale.
Can we raise the price before we put it?
So Bill, I don't know if that answered all your questions on that, but, okay.
Yeah, I did.
Any else?
Um, no, I just was talking to you earlier about the bag. No, you didn't hear nothing back from the seeding.
I didn't hear anything back. I emailed him. Uh, he may have emailed me back. I don't know.
I was just, this, the bag needs to be fertilized and seed needs to be touched up and Denise was gonna work with the, making that call. I'll just follow up, that's all.
Yes.
Bill, anything?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, I was over at the, uh, Central Fire last week to, uh, see their new ladder truck. Very, very impressive vehicle. Hopefully it's worth every penny we spent and hopefully we never, ever have to use it. That would be the greatest, uh, victory of all time, if we never used that, uh, truck. It's like insurance. Nice to have it. Hope you don't need it. The swearing and ceremony of Chief Gillen, um, I'd like to personally thank him now. I do not believe I'll be able to make it due to personal commitments, but I want him to know that, uh, I'm strongly in his corner and, um, wish him all the best.
I'll be at that.
Because, um, as he goes, so will the town go, so we hope all the best for, uh, Chief Gillen and, uh, there's gonna be great things for the town. Uh, I wanna apologize for my absence at the Memorial Day ceremonies. Again, I had, uh, commitments. I just couldn't, uh, break at the time, so, uh...
If I, it was actually a beautiful service, so really kudos to Dave Tuttle and his group for pulling that together. They did a really nice job.
Thank you to Ed and Mike for attending that on behalf of the board.
Yeah, that was good.
Appreciate it. And, uh, this is about it. Thank you.
Alright, so can we get a motion to adjourn at nine fourteen?
Motion to adjourn at nine fourteen.
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Yep.
Thank you.